Good afternoon, and welcome to the City Council Meeting of April 17th. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask that you all rise for the singing of our National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With flowing hearts we see thee rise to north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Tenille Towns for the singing of our National Anthem. I am going to go straight into proclamations for today. I have two. Uh, first one I'm going to talk about is the Earth Day proclamation. Earth Day 2023, there's a significant event happening this Saturday at the Montrose Cultural Center. It's in conjunction with ourselves and the County of Grand Prairie. We really encourage everyone to come out and you can win an e-bike, which is really cool. I will start with the proclamation of Earth Day Peace Region, April 22nd, 2023. Whereas Earth Day was first observed in 1970 to raise awareness of the health of the environment. And whereas the first international Earth Day held in 1990 mobilized citizens and leaders in 141 countries to join a global effort to protect the environment. And whereas all sectors of society have the responsibility to act positively for the environment. And whereas our daily actions can pollute and degrade the fragile environment that both humans and wildlife depend on to survive. And whereas Earth Day is a day that is intended to inspire awareness and appreciation for earth's natural environment. And whereas Earth Day encourages citizens to act positively for the environment and adapt responsible lifestyle habits that conserve and protect local and global ecosystems. And whereas Earth Day provides the opportunity for positive actions to conserve your natural resources by reducing, reusing, and recycling, using efficient transportation, and buying and using products and services that are environmentally responsible. Now therefore, I, Jackie Clayton, the Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, in partnership with Reeve Bob Marshall, the County of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day in the peace region. And we encourage all residents to use this day for positive public activities, directing community action to preserve the environment. So thank you for that one. Next one regarding National Volunteer Week, proclamation of National Volunteer Week from April 16th to 22nd, 2023. Whereas 24 million Canadians give their time through formal and informal types of volunteering, contributing close to 5 billion volunteer hours per year. And whereas volunteers across the Grand Prairie region are individuals, families, workers, retirees, community members of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas the collective result of the work done by our region's volunteers is that our communities are more vibrant and inclusive place to work, live, and play. And whereas volunteers deliver comfort, inspire creativity, support literacy and learning, share skills and strengthen our community. And whereas organizations across our region rely on volunteers, include such fundamental community groups as cultural festivals, community facilities, and support gathering spaces, hospitals, social services, museums, sport and recreation organizations. Now therefore, I, Jackie Clayton, Mayor of the City of Grand Prairie, in partnership with Reeve Marshall, the Reeve of the County of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim April 16th to 22nd, 2023 as National Volunteer Week and urge our fellow citizens to recognize the crucial role the volunteers play in our community. Thank you. Thank you for that. Moving on to today's agenda, the adoption of the previous council minutes. Councillor O'Connor.
I move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held April 3rd, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the adoption of today's agenda, I'll call on Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion isn't in order. Seeing no additions or omissions, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Now moving on to the delegation portion of our meeting. As if you're not aware, there are opportunities to come speak to council on anything you wish to speak to council about. There is a process to that. It's really simple. You go online. On the Friday prior, if it's a council meeting, on the Monday by noon, if it's a standing committee meeting, fill out some really simple paperwork, let us know ahead of time you're coming, and then you get to speak to council. Today, we have six delegations that let us know ahead of time that they wanted to come and speak to us. First being Ms. Michelle Gardner. So if you could please come up, introduce yourself, let us know what you're here about. All delegations, and I'll probably say it every time, just so we can try to keep on time and on schedule. Delegations get five minutes. There is an opportunity for council to ask questions of the delegate. And at that time, the delegation goes away, we go on to the next delegation. And then at the end of our afternoon session, we deal with delegations and any direction or business that may be arising. So thank you, welcome, and please introduce yourself for those who may be watching.
I'm Michelle Gardner, so Mayor and council. My name is Michelle Gardner. I'm a resident of Smith subdivision. Yes, I am a member of administration. I am on vacation today, so I wanted to make sure everybody knew that. I'm here speaking for my husband, Ed, and myself. My husband and I have lived in the Smith subdivision for the past 24 years. It may not be your choice to live in this area, but we deliberately chose Smith as a community where we could age in place. When purchasing the property, we knew that the vacant lands to the south were zoned high-density residential, meaning someone could build a 12-story building behind our home. We have hoped that seniors' housing or a care facility would be built there and we could move across the lane as we aged out of our home. We realized that this land can and is likely to be housing rather than a care facility. I want to provide some context about our neighborhood. Many residents on 98th Avenue have lived there much longer than we have. Of the 12 homes adjacent to the proposed facility, six homes are of seniors who have lived in the area for far longer than us. On the north side of 98th Avenue are also many long-term homeowners. In the area of 98th and 99th Avenue, there are 55 homes. Some homes are multi-generational families. Homes on 98th Avenue do not go up for sale often, and when they do, they frequently sell quickly. Several years ago, two large apartment buildings were built within our neighborhood. Besides more families using the park, having high-density residential added to the area has not had significant impacts. I still do not get any more than 15 kids at Halloween. The paving and sidewalk improvements that have been made to our neighborhood are appreciated. I can now take our dog Carl for a walk, not have to cross 100th Avenue, and always have a sidewalk to walk on. Of course, with these improvements, there has been an increase in traffic. Now I need to time when I leave for work, or there may be challenges getting out due to the traffic on Park Road and 96th Street. It usually isn't too bad as I'm heading north. If I was going south, that is where it isn't easy. It is a blind corner where Park Road becomes 96th Street. You cannot see oncoming traffic. And often, traffic on Park Road travels faster than the allowable 50 kilometers per hour. I have experienced many near misses. Thankfully, enforcement services does monitor the area. It is a quiet area, except during soccer season, which while not a long season, it can be a painful time due to a lack of parking. Frequently, we cannot have visitors on evenings and weekends during May and June as the street is full of cars trying to park as close to the soccer field as possible. Many cars block access to our driveways or our street. I understand the need to park close, that is, parents bringing their kids, juggling other children, equipment, chairs, et cetera, and I would also want to park close. The Soccer Association has a parking lot in the northeast corner that is never open. Opening this lot would aid in reducing the stress on both sides of the soccer field. So adding a large facility that would host provincial events without enough parking is a concern. Our little neighborhood cannot withstand additional parking stressors. As a long-term resident of the area, I have experienced the city making decisions for the area without consulting or even informing residents of the changes. If council believes this area needs improvements, I respectfully request they work with the residents and industries along Park Road before making decisions. An area redevelopment plan may be needed. That process would allow residents and businesses to provide input on what the potential for the area is. We are requesting that you consider placing this facility outside of Smith subdivision. Please consider our quality of life when making your final decision.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Gardner. I'll open it up to council for questions, recognizing councillor Bosch in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Hello, Michelle. Nice to see you here and everybody else. Thanks for coming out. I'm sure we'll hear from everyone. The only question I have for you is, you talked about the Soccer Association have a parking lot there. Has anybody, to your knowledge, whether it be you or your group that you are, you know, hosting this for, have you ever talked to the Soccer Association about opening up that space?
Mayor Clayton.
So, Ms. Gardner, just so you don't look in this as a delegation, feel free to speak openly with council. Thank you.
So, yes, we have talked to Soccer Association, and I must add an update. I did write this on Thursday. And we contacted a soccer mom, and she's been in touch with the Soccer Association. She did not know that there was a parking lot on the northeast corner. I have contacted the Soccer Association many times. When I was on the Board of Directors of the Alberta Summer Games in 2018, I did make the request, and that's the last time that the Soccer Association opened that parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
I see no further questions, so I thank you for coming today. I will get you to stay there as I see you are the next delegation representing the Smith area residents. So just for those who may be watching at home, please go ahead, five minutes again, and then council will have an opportunity for questions. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a few members of Smith. You guys want to stand up? And so this presentation is in behalf of many of these folks that we knocked on doors and got these comments from. So just to put it into context for you, some folks are afraid of public speaking.
Not a problem.
As residents of the Smith neighborhood, we are speaking against the proposal to build a multipurpose recreational facility within our residential area. If council were discussing a new housing facility, we would be here to speak in favor of the project. We are not against growth. We recognize that a facility like this is needed within our community. The concern is that this large recreational facility will provide traffic and parking challenges that our area cannot accommodate. Councillor Pallott commented that these types of facilities bring much traffic and shouldn't be in residential areas, which is of course where we live, in a residential area. The March 28th report identified similar types of facilities in Edmonton. So we researched how these types of facilities are placed in Edmonton. Of the 10 facilities we found, two are in residential areas. One is located close to two arterial roads and has 135,000 square feet of parking, while the other has a 35,000-square-foot parking area. Understanding that administration still needs to map the potential for the proposed facility on the Smith lands, we did a little work to see how it could fit. The most parking area we could add was 16,000 square feet, or approximately 80 parking stalls, half the size of the smallest parking at this type of facility in a residential area in Edmonton. The Activity and Reception Center has about 100 stalls. Assuming every vehicle that parks at the facility brings four people, and the facility's capacity is 2,100 people, you would require about 525 parking stalls. So even using the Arc as overflow, there still would not be enough parking to accommodate vehicles for an event at the facility at half-capacity, or about 1,000 people. Park Road and 96th Street on the east side have no space for parking on the road. Therefore, the only overflow space will be in the residential areas, and we are only considering the proposed facility. What if something is happening at the Arc, or at the soccer fields, or if one of the residential properties is hosting some type of celebration? Council has identified that the goal would be to hold provincial events. In discussions with some folks within the sporting world, we understand that if there is a tournament, it could involve 500 athletes participating. With those athletes come buses and families. Buses take up more stalls than light-duty vehicles, impacting available parking spaces. We contacted one of the facilities in Edmonton, and their facility is also used to host weddings and cultural events. 200 stalls are not going to be sufficient for that type of event. Think of the Folk Festival on a more frequent basis. Traffic is another concern. Since the city has completed the improvements to Park Road and 92nd Avenue, which was paving traffic lights and sidewalks, we have seen a dramatic increase in traffic on the road. There have been over 20 speed infractions in the past year. Many have experienced near misses due to the blind corner where Park Road meets 96th Street. Another potential traffic impact is the snow removal service. 96th Street and Park Road is a direct route to the snow dump site. Then there's the issue of having a community organization operate a city-owned facility with no oversight on what occurs in the facility. The Soccer Association has not been a great neighbor over the years. The parking lot on the east side of the field is never open. It stays locked as parents and soccer players struggle with parking. The Soccer Association has made many decisions about the fields that impact our neighborhood, and we, the residents, have never been consulted or even informed of the decisions or outcomes. From the placement of the building 20 years ago, to the decision to allow graffiti on the building two years ago, and then reverse the decision, creating a place for constant vandalism now. The city has continued to allow the Soccer Association to keep the fields in disrepair. There's broken equipment, bleachers, and the fence. It has not required the Soccer Association to maintain the area, breaching the property standards by law. Sorry. No, I can't get my page to work out. Electronics. Okay, we'll go with that. That gives you a pretty good sense, anyway.
Perfect. Thank you for that. I'm just going to open it to council for questions. For the delegation, seeing none, I appreciate you coming today, Ms. Gardner, and taking your time to organize your neighborhood. Moving on to other delegations for today. The next on our agenda is William Colt Maines, and if I'm pronouncing your last name incorrectly, I apologize. But please come up to the table, sir. Introduce yourself. For those who are watching, I'll give you a few minutes to get set up. And then same thing, five minutes, take your time, have a seat, please. And whenever you're ready, the microphone's on, and you can start. Just introduce yourself. Thank you.
I'm Colt. I'm a new resident of Smith. And me and my wife just moved in. We've only been there for about six months, and I've heard about this project that was going up, and I'm kind of not really interested myself, so. Michelle's been great. She's been helpful with me, and basically what I got here is a pile of forms from the rest of the community. I've done some legwork and gone around door-to-door to see what everyone else thinks about it. And yeah, I got some key points here about. And yeah, I got some key points here, about just basic stuff, you know, she covered basically everything, which was pretty awesome. But what I got from the general consensus is that people don't want to see this go up. The parking is already crazy on the other side of the soccer field. Like, I've already had, listened to numerous people. I spent a couple nights walking around and stuff like that, like I said. So here's a pile of those, and I got some other concerns and letters from other neighbors that didn't want to come today, but I'm young and I'm sure I can do it, so. I'll just start off with that. So, "Dear Counselor, I'm 86 years old. I love to sit outside with my pets. I have a dog and two cats. The noise, the lights, possible smells from the soccer dome will not let us do this as we want. I also love to work in my garden, and the vegetables from that could be affected from possible pollution, dust, and so on. Please reconsider the location and..." "Leave the..." I can't really read the handwriting, "but we would like to enjoy the last of our years of our life here without disturbance." So. I don't personally know her, but she's been there a lot longer than me, and I feel like that was a pretty good, well-written statement, so. Here's a two-piece. "So, dear counselors, it has come to my attention the vacant land in the Smith subdivision is in consideration to have an inflatable soccer dome here. This facility is to be built directly behind the house I live in. I am in agreement with Grand Prairie needs more recreational centers, however, not in a residential area. I am concerned over the effects of having 135,000 square foot inflatable dome merely meters away from my place residence. That would impact the quality of my life, and others would be possibly affected as well, due to the increase of noise, pollution, light, garbage, increase of traffic, the parking. Please reconsider the vacant land for something more practical for the Smith subdivision for the city of Grand Prairie." Jerry. Jerry Warren. So I don't know whether or not you guys want to look at this, or take them, or...
Sure, we're happy to take them. I will just maybe ask you to leave them on the table. I'll get some administration to pick them up and share them with council.
Yeah, and basically, I'm in consensus with the rest of the community. I feel like it's, I'm not against it, but I feel like there should be a little bit more thought into where it should be going, and basically, Michelle just took the trip right off. She knows what she's doing, so.
Great.
And I agree with every little bit that she says, so.
Thanks so much for that. So, open it up to council for questions for the delegation, starting with Councilor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming out, Colt, and thanks for working in your community. Can you just tell us how many letters you do have? I can estimate there, but I can't take the...
Sure, I can do a little tally here. So, myself, I know myself, I've probably gotten at least over 20, and I just went around the entire community and talked to people, and actually, it's pretty crazy what you learn about people and how they think and how they live and the quality of life that they don't want to lose if this doesn't go up, and they appreciate people coming around and actually asking them, because it's important. Exactly 30, and I bet if I had a little more time, I probably could have gotten a little more.
So, and just a follow-up question, are they all individually written, or is it kind of a form letter that's signed?
Uh, that's signed by the owner of the residents themselves, yep.
Okay.
Sorry, just to clarify, I think Councilor Berg's question was, are they individual letters, or is the content the same in all of them?
Majority of the same content, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing Councilor Bressi.
Great, well, thanks for coming in, and I personally love knocking on doors and hearing from people about their communities, so I'm glad you got to have a taste of that. You really do learn some cool stuff.
I appreciate it.
I'm just curious, I know where Ms. Gardner lives. Where, you don't have to give me your address or exactly, but kind of what side of the land do you live on?
It will affect basically my sunlight is why. I'm going for this would be, you guys would basically be taking away mine and my wife's little oasis is why we bought the place. We didn't buy it for the house, we bought it for the view, the land, and the location. So it was a nice, quiet neighborhood, and yeah, so basically the whole unity of it makes it why we wanted it, so.
So I'm just trying to figure out, is it in your front yard or your backyard, I guess, is what it is?
This would be my backyard, that.
Okay. Awesome, thank you, I appreciate it. And, sorry, one more, if I may?
No, for...
Did you just talk to people kind of on your side of the field, or are some of those letters by people that it would be their front yard, they're on kind of the other side?
Yep, yeah, I went to all the other side. I don't have a picture to show you, but where the soccer, whatever that is, the indoor place that's already up over there, like, to be quite honest, from what I heard from that side over there is, they already have parking problems. They already have people that clog up their streets like crazy, so adding this there just, I don't even want to imagine, they don't want to imagine, so. And majority of them were, yeah, basically on, like, we don't know why they would do that, so.
So, thank you.
Thanks for that. Councilor O'Toole.
Thank you for being here today. Just a couple questions. How long have you lived here in that location?
So, five, six months now. I just bought the house, so I'll be there for a while.
Perfect. So there's a building on the property already, Recreation Reception Center. Have you entertained going over there to have a look at that?
Is that the smaller one right next to the park, or are you talking like the big indoor?
Big one.
I've been there a couple times, but I haven't really, I've been busy with work, to be honest.
Yep, nope.
Doing other things with the house, I've been renovating a lot, so I've been pretty busy.
Good.
I can't even believe I found time to get out and go door-to-door, to be honest, so.
It's amazing what a guy wants to do when you got to drive, right?
Yeah, but I did live two blocks north for the last seven years, so.
So is that building that was created a few years ago, has it caused any grief that you're aware of?
To the neighbors that are along that strip?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what I was just talking about, so majority of those...
Reception Center?
Yeah, majority of those neighbors, and that big soccer field that's already open?
Yep.
So there's already, from what I understand, there's already not quite enough parking there, and people already clog up their streets, and they actually are kind of tired of it. So that's at least half of the people, at least, so.
Sorry, just to clarify, I think Councilor O'Toole's not referencing soccer players that park on the street to play soccer, more of the Activity Reception Center and the parking lot that's there, if that building is impeding residents in the neighborhood?
From my understanding, I have, on my two cents, personally, I have, not me, but the residents there that I do talk to, they feel like it's, does, just for like, like, if the building's being used and maybe there's not enough parking, they do get a lot of people that congest their street already, and they see this as basically another congestion. My, that's what I got from it anyways.
Okay, well, I always thought that it was empty all the time, and...
That's what I thought, too.
And I went in there one day, and there were 75 kids riding their little tricycles and skateboards and skateboard, yeah, and...
Yeah.
So it's misleading. It's a very full building.
Totally, and I was, I was like, oh, that's interesting, so, I didn't know that, so. There is a couple other things, too, that they would, that some people did say that were in common with other people, but some people just want to go on with their lives. They don't want to have to sit here and do this, and basically, I just give them my information and go on my way.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for that, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Colt, for coming in, and I understand that the area's zone for seniors, complex, and low-income housing, do your group, and I understand from other people that have called me, that you don't have a problem with a building going up, that will house other people, like the apartments onto the west?
Like the big apartments?
Yes.
Sorry, what's your question exactly?
I just want to know, are you okay, knowing that if the dome doesn't go there, that an apartment complex may go there?
Yeah, it depends like the size of the apartment complex, to be honest, because like I said, and that has another thing to do with the community, whether or not they're on board with that or not, it all depends. So if it's like a, I don't know how tall that building is, how many stories it is or not, but like I said, kind of this would kind of affect my little own oasis and the rest of the people that have lived there well, longer than I have. So, and what I think it boils down to is just what kind of quality of life is, it's going to affect you, so you can take it out however you want from there. I mean, I haven't heard of anything going up like that, or in the talks about, so I haven't really thought about that, but if it's going to be in the way, I mean, then yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, sorry, go ahead.
I would like to also add that, there's one thing here that actually isn't noted, is that the wildlife there is actually pretty awesome, and I feel like that could be affected as well. I'm a pretty avid person about keeping our wildlife safe and everything like that, and we see a ton of deer, all sorts of animals in the back, so it's not like, yeah. There's just a couple of things that could be on here that I think were missed, but in my opinion, but I think majority of it is, these key points that we have going on here are pretty major to the community, so.
Thanks for that. Councilor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for coming in, and thanks to the folks that come in. It's, obviously, the area's got a concern with it. I'm just curious, when you were door-knocking, and just to kind of build on Councilor O'Connor's point, if a dome doesn't go there, there's folks behind you that really want to put up some apartment buildings and so, that'll be probably the goal of the city, so...
Yeah.
When you were talking to people, did the thought of this built, this land being never developed come up, because...
I don't know. I don't know, it's just the size of it, the congestion, like, you have a train that's what, 300 yards from that, maybe? What happens when the train goes there and everyone tries to leave at once? You know, I got to work, I go to work early in the morning, so I mean, it might not affect me, but for the neighbors or whoever, I mean, there's a couple different ways you can look at it, but, you know, this thing is supposed to be at least 40 feet tall, at least, you know? You put strip malls or even other apartments or rentals, I don't think they're going to be as, they very well could not be as high as this. I have no idea. It depends on what the city proposes, I guess, and how the community members react to it.
So, and I guess that is my concern, because probably I would hope or guess that we're going to actually see some very vertical buildings there, and so...
And I guess the difference between a building and a, this is a positive-pressure building, right? So there's always going to be some sort of, I'm not sure how it's powered exactly, so I feel like there could be a little bit more problems with this, rather than what you're talking about.
Okay, well, fair enough.
All right, I see no further questions from council, so I wanted to thank you for coming and taking the time to engage with your neighborhood. It's appreciated.
Appreciate it.
Next on our list, delegations, we are going to change the conversation a little bit. Grand Spirit Foundation, please come forward. And as you know the routine, please introduce yourselves, about five minutes. Introduce yourself for those who are watching.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton and the rest of council for accepting us as a delegation. I have Steve R.CAO with me, and also our vice chair.
Alvin Hubert, I'm the vice chair of Grand Spirit and the... Reevs, I don't know who else.
Welcome.
And then just the rest of our foundation, if they want to stand up and just introduce themselves.
Welcome, everyone.
Thank you. So, quite often, when we come to this table...
Sorry, can you just introduce yourself for those who are watching?
People don't know who I am.
I do!
I'm Judy Coco Tylo Becheris, the current chair...
I just never want to have to say your name publicly, so I just want you to introduce yourself.
Judy Alexandra Coco Tylo Becheris, the current chair of the Grand Spirit Foundation. I know that we had a meeting the other day when, because you had meetings with your stakeholders, and we were here and presented Grand Spirit's operations. Talk a little bit about Smith Lands, and at that point, Mayor Clayton had made a comment about that I had a lot of history. I don't think she's referring to my age.
No.
I think she's referring to my time on council. And so when we knew that there would be so many other delegations regarding Smith Lands, we thought we would come again, and I'm just going to do a little bit of history, and you know our heart. We are affordable in social, family, and senior housing. That's our mandate by ministerial order. I think we do it very, very well. And so, this conversation of Smith Lands actually was born in October of 2012, and that was when there were 28 units. There were provincial housing units that had been sent to the city, and there were some wiring issues, and there had been a fire in one of them, and then it had to be looked at and knew that we could either try to repair them, change all of that wiring, or sell it. So in September of 2014, the Smith Lands were purchased by council for $2.4 million. And then, this is just going to roll along how it went, that in May of 16, the social housing units were sold for $2.2 million to pay for the Smith Lands. And in December of 2016, city administration presented the shadow plan of housing development in the Smith subdivision. So it looked at many things, and you've all seen them, and, you know, there were townhouses, and there were duplexes, and there were some walk-ups and those kinds of things. So the vision for that subdivision was to have innovative housing that would be both affordable and social. So the shadow plan was then. Then, a year later, council directed administration to work with us to look at what were our needs for Smith Lands. Then, almost like in February, we provided council with an overview of what we had for a vision for those lands. And then, in many conversations and meetings, in March of 2018, a motion was made by city council on March 12th, pardon me, to approve a portion of the land to be allocated to Grand Spirit Foundation from within the Smith subdivision's site for housing. And so that was done in March of 2018. And then, in 2020, there was a, and so we received this land, and I think when municipalities have partnered with Grand Spirit all the time, they provide the land. In many cases, they are already have utilities to them. This was not a serviced land. So, yes, it was great that we had the land, but any time someone approached us to do any kind of development and realized that there was no servicing, the cost of a project would just be exponential because we had to service it. But then, the city made the decision to service the land, which was great. And when that was done, then this land became really desirable, not only for housing, but also for other things. And in September of 2021, the utilities were put into this. And the city has always talked about being partners with Grand Spirit regarding have another facility built within the city, and so, and we know that. And I know the council represents all of their citizens, and recreation is one thing, and housing is another, and those kinds of things, and you were able to make a decision on what it is you think your citizens are wanting from you. And I'm saying, I would really like you to think about maintaining it as housing. And so, a question has been asked from this table to us quite a few times, like, why has Grand Spirit taken so long? Like, why haven't you done anything? Well, we haven't done anything because we didn't have the, we have the allocation of the land, but not the actual full commitment. We also didn't have it serviced. And there were people now that it's serviced who have approached us and said, we want to build housing there. And so, that's where we are today. I want to tell you, you already know this, but I want to chewed our own horn, and that's that other municipalities have partnered with Grand Spirit, like even my own home Beaver Lodge, when we made the decision, council made the decision to give Grand Spirit $300,000 for seed funding for an expansion of Amos Court, which was wonderful, and ultimately we got that back, but we were willing to do that, and we did write the check. The Spear River municipalities around Spear River have provided land and funds toward the buildings that we're doing, and the city has always been at the table, and unfortunately, when it was ready to build the senior facility that ended up out at Claremont, there wasn't land within the city that was available, so that's where we went. And so, we know that municipalities have partnered with us, and we've had great success with it, and we know that we will partner with you, and we, all of us, will have really great success. So I'm asking that you keep this consideration for housing. So I'm asking that you keep this consideration for housing. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll recognize Counsel Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Hi Judy, thank you for speaking on behalf of the Grand Spirit Foundation and thank you to all those who came. I have two questions, uh, if I may. The timeline to build, if this dome doesn't go there and go somewhere else, uh, what are you looking for as a timeline?
As soon as possible. I'm sorry, that's, that's a really hard question. Steve, do you want to maybe talk to this from your conversations with other people?
As soon as we can get confirmation that the land is, um, dedicated to Grand Spirit Foundation, we would enter into the P three concept. We would actually do a request for, or expression of interest. And what I've been told by our consultants is that's pretty much immediate. How soon we would actually see drawings or something beyond that, I'm not clear on that part of the process. But it would probably start within a couple of months where we would actually have the process together.
Okay, I'm happy to hear a timeline or even, even one that's a bit vague because quite honestly, land sitting there is doing nobody good. You have houses that you need built and, or housing. And we need to, to get that done outside of recreation. The other question I had, if I may.
Please go ahead.
The railway, is that a quality of life negative impact for housing?
An answer personally, I lived across the street from the railway, it wasn't negative to me, uh, for this location. I don't believe it would be either.
Personally, I lived right across a railway in Le Duke. So I concur with you, but not everybody feels the same, but I wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Counsel Tison.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Thanks for being here. I guess everybody, this is my first time in the queue for questions. Sort of chipping off of what Counselor Bosch just asked you around timelines. Let's see, the city decided to move forward with the proposed dome in the Smithlands. What, what do you anticipate your timeline would be if you had to start over from scratch looking for land again?
If we had to start over from scratch to start this again, uh, we would definitely be a few years into the process. I think this one with Smithlands, because of the, um, not being serviced, turned it into a somewhere six to eight year process. And so now that the, the lands are actually serviced and we're ready to do the expression of interest, it'd be a lot quicker. But if we had to start this all over again, we'd be a couple of years to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Plott.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm just curious, um, if Grand Spirit's done modeling on this land to know about how many units you think you'd be able to get if this was, you know, fully utilized and the city said, give or go and start putting up buildings. Do you know about how many units you'd be able to scale on that? Have you guys done a model?
Well, I know that the shadow plan, and I'm sorry, Wade, I don't have it. It's in the files. I mean, you could get it right away. And that full extension of that innovative housing was huge. I'm sorry, I just don't know, Steve, do you think it was like two hundred or?
Yeah, it was in the eight hundred range for the full build out on the, um, eleven acres that were there before you guys pulled a piece off. But, um, the consultants, or sorry, the, um, developer we have in, in queue right now with us is saying that, uh, three and a half acres would provide for a hundred and sixty units. They need three and a half acres.
Okay, so three and a half acres is what you're, you're
Three and a half to four is what we're, three and a half to four is what we're hoping on. And Smithlands has kind of a weird shape to it, so I couldn't really speak to that little corner piece to it. That's careful.
That'll be a challenging one to get full utilization on it for sure, but okay, thank you for that.
Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, appreciate you're here talking about this project. And roughly, if you were to put the hundred and sixty units right now, you're, say you'd be able to get that in the ground starting in two months. Roughly, how high would this building be? Do you have any rough concepts for that?
And if I can, Mayor Clayton, I'm gonna clarify, uh, in two months, we would probably have some kind of answer on the expression of interest, not in the ground. If I could just clarify that with you, Counsel. This, the height, if I recall correctly, was proposed at four stories, four stories.
Four?
Yeah, two buildings, four stories was what was proposed by the current developer we have.
Okay, and that would be on the Park Avenue side? Where are they, where would that be located?
Yeah, and I hadn't seen any drawings. They hadn't actually provided any kind of site sketches or anything yet. They were looking to, uh, push us into partnership, which was nice. We need to take the next steps to actually see what they're proposing. It's a part of the, kind of like protecting their interest, I guess you might say, if that's appropriate, Mayor Counsel, uh, Mayor Clayton.
Follow it, Counsel O'Connor.
Yeah, and the bottom floor, would that be partway into the ground or is it just level, a level entry for the first floor?
I'm sorry, I don't have those details. Um, we'd be happy to look at that as soon as you guys are willing to approve the lands for us to carry forward and we'll bring all those, we'll bring all those wonderful details forward. And I'm sorry, it does sound funny, but I don't mean to be funny. It, it is, we don't have those, uh, details that far. We just did a, a quick synopsis with that developer and they said, yes, no problem. We can do a hundred and sixty units, two buildings. And then they provided a proposal, which I believe was circulated to council here.
Okay, and one last question, or I'll let somebody else know.
That'd be great. Counsel O'Toole.
Well, thank you very much for being here. We've seen more of you this last couple of months than we've seen all year. But, uh, I just wanna clarify something. How many? How much housing is needed in this area by Grand Spirit? I know if we go ahead with this, that goes ahead. That's a hundred and sixty, but how many would be?
So
Yep.
Totally, total currently, there are five hundred and fifty-eight approved applicants on our waiting list for some type of affordable housing. Family housing, uh, this is comprised of family housing for three hundred and seventy-three people. And of the three hundred and thirty-two, of these, three hundred and thirty-two are single parent households. The seniors, um, comprise a hundred and eighty-five and they're looking for apartments. And I think the one thing that happens is some seniors may still be caring for grandchildren or children. Some seniors won't come into our existing, um, stock, if you want to call it that, existing doors, because they have a pet and we don't, and we don't allow pets. So, um, of that component, there's a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and eighty-five are seniors. And of these five hundred and fifty, ninety-five percent of these stats are within city of Grand Prairie proper. These numbers were extracted from, from our regional, but ninety-five percent of them are for the city. Is that onto your question?
And just one more. Uh, so there, this is not just seniors housing that's gonna go in there. It'll be mixed use. Thank you.
Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And a question for either Steve or Judy. If you were given kind of a blank slate, looking at the entire city as, as potential zones to put or different neighborhoods to put your next building, would the Smith subdivision still be your first choice?
Um, we're, I'm gonna say this very carefully. We, we follow the lead of councils. We follow the lead of, uh, Grand Spirit follows the lead of municipalities. Similar to Spirit River, the municipalities chose the land and we partnered with the province and found the thirty-four million dollars that was required to do that. So we partner with you guys. You guys have the internal resources required to help understand where that housing might be and what the best floor or best location is going to be. We don't necessarily step forward and ask for those lands. So it's a kind of a loaded question.
That's actually a very fair answer. It's one of the things that we want to see. Be it a soccer dome, be it affordable housing, be it senior housings, we want to put it in the best spots for the, for the people that are going to ultimately use it. So I realize it's somewhat of a loaded question, but again, it's one that, again, in a dream scenario, where would you ideally like the building? But again, I'll accept your answer. That's fair.
Counsel O'Connor, did you want back in the queue? Yeah, well, usually you push a button and it tells me. Go ahead, Counsel O'Connor.
I'll, I'll own that one. Um, I'm just wondering, not looking into the future at all, not knowing you don't have all your plans. How willing would you be if this area were to be used for senior and affordable housing? How willing would you be able to work with the neighborhood to make sure their, uh, quality of life is not impacted? Not knowing what the plan's gonna look like, but I have to ask the question.
Well, I would like to believe that once we're coming into a neighborhood, we would not be just bulldozing in and obtrusive in any, in any way. We would absolutely have some, some interaction with the neighborhood. I know that, and I'm not sure about the Smith subdivision, whether or not there is a redevelopment plan in that, in that area or not. But your own planning department has great ideas on how things are redeveloped. And I'm just gonna do a plug because I did lots of drafting for them and did, made some really nice maps. So I know that they, that they, um, they would have a way for us to ensure that everything was aesthetic and, and continuous of the neighborhood to try and keep it, uh, true to its nature. That, that's my answer. And I don't know, Mike, if that's
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just gonna jump in the queue there. Um, Judy, can you clarify for me? You mentioned that there's approximately five hundred already approved applicants for Grand Spirit Foundation, um, housing. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's applicants which could be one person, two people, four people, right?
Yes, yes. So the family, it's family, three hundred and seventy-three of the five fifty-eight are families.
Okay.
And three hundred and thirty-two of those three seventy-eight are single parent households.
Perfect.
And then the seniors of that number, one eighty-five.
Okay, and so the, and approximately the project that you're looking, I'm hoping to put in Smith subdivision would be about a hundred and sixty units. And what would the composition be of single family, seniors? How many people would be in the towers that you're looking to build there?
And I think I heard mixed was mentioned here, so we would mix that. It wouldn't be just seniors, wouldn't be just family.
Right, and that's what I asked. In the mix, how many people total approximately in the hundred and sixty units?
And the hundred and sixty units would come from this?
Yeah.
Um, and are you referring to the market versus affordable? Is that what you mean?
Total.
Many people would be housed. I think that's what you're asking us, how many people would be housed? I would like to think that it would probably be close to three hundred, even if we did two. Like, that's probably a low number, a single family, a lone parent household, maybe three. And you know, maybe a senior by herself is somebody else. I, I would think that the minimum of that would be three hundred.
So, but it could potentially impact of your five hundred pre-approved applicants, a hundred and sixty could, could come off that.
Units, yeah. Hundred, we're talking a hundred and sixty units, so it's more people would come off of that.
Yep, you bet. Great. Thanks. A hundred and sixty units, which would be a hundred and sixty applicant, applications?
No, a hundred and sixty units would be a hundred and sixty apartments.
I get that, but each application may have more than one person. So if you take a hundred and sixty applications and a hundred and sixty units, it balances out. Okay, perfect. Counsel Plott.
Uh, thanks, McLean. I just tweaked something. So I'm just curious, so when a hundred and sixty units, is it twenty-five percent seniors, twenty-five percent family and fifty percent market? Like, I'm just trying to understand what the mix would be on that. It wouldn't be, or am I wrong on that? It could be a hundred and sixty all subsidized units.
Well, I think that when you work with your P three partners and, and there is a model of how are they going to even make their money, some of it needs to be affordable, some to be social, some to be the other. And I think until we get into that, Wade, I don't think we can give you those numbers. We, we would do our very, very best because we're addressing affordable and social housing. That, that's what our mandate is.
Okay, I just, I would caution us to think we're gonna build a hundred and sixty social doors in the spot.
Right.
The modeling, potentially on financing, it might be twenty-five percent, like more traditional model.
We will do, that's what we want to
Hope for a hundred, but like that's
We'll go for broke. Thanks.
I had one more question. Um, I just, on March twenty-eighth, uh, the Invest Grand Prairie Standing Committee meeting, there was a motion passed that directed administration to bring back potential locations for housing projects up to five potential locations around the city. I just wanted to know if you're aware of that motion that, so if there was an intent from council tonight to put a recreation facility in Smith, that wouldn't leave Grand Spirit Foundation without a home. There is, there is other lands in the city of Grand Prairie that are serviced as ready to go as the Smithlands. And I just wanted to know if you're aware of that.
I, I was aware of the motion. I was just not aware of what that committee structure is and how long that would take and those kinds of things. But I am aware that, and, and you and I have had a conversation and you made a commitment that the city will provide land. And so, yes.
The city values the work that Grand Spirit Foundation does, absolutely. And we truly appreciate what you've done in our region for providing housing for many people. So absolutely, thank you. All right, I see no one else in the queue, so I really appreciate you coming. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your board members that came as well today. Appreciate some of you drove some distance for coming in, so thank you for that. Uh, moving on to our next delegation, and I apologize, my screen is not there. Six point five, Ms. Lois Taylor, if you would like to come to the table. I'll give you a few minutes to get set up and then just introduce yourself for those who are watching. And take five minutes to address council, and then council may have some questions following that. Thank you.
My name is Lois Taylor. I am one of the over one of the over four years in the Smith subdivision. I've raised our daughter there. And I personally, at this time, still have my grandchildren in my backyard on a regular basis. This, this structure, not four stories high, eight stories high, is gonna be arms' reach from my backyard. I am very concerned about this because it is definitely going to change our life in that area. You can bring seniors in that aren't going to be leaving the Smith subdivision in drones. They're gonna leave. We have two huge apartment blocks at the end of our street and they do not affect our coming and going from our driveways at this time, or from our road. A light would be there, would be great. I must admit, it's supposed to slow to thirty-five around that curve. And when you are turning left, you have got your life in your hands. And now you want us to compare this to a few people coming down Park Avenue to thousands. I really do think that you guys really need to really consider that this is not the right area. I'm wondering, are you looking at putting up some kind of a wall? I would like to see a long, high wall because you, these people that are coming there, that are strangers, are going to be able to look straight into my backyard and see my grandkids playing. I'm already not safe. I watch my grandkids like a hawk. You can ask my whole neighborhood that I went to every door on the block while they were hiding in the garage one day. Panicked that they had disappeared. I also do not see on the instructions where the door is coming and going. You are telling us that there's gonna be a restaurant and the noise from the restaurant fans and people coming in and out smoking. I am concerned about, you know how many cigarettes get tossed and cause fires? I know at least two huge fires in B C that were caused because of cigarettes. This is definitely a concern of mine. I would, so if there is gonna be a bar and whatnot, I hope that it's at the wrong, at the other end. Also, uh, this has been mentioned about the poor facility around the soccer field right now. You can walk around it right now. Who is going to maintain the fences of the soccer field and the garbage and the cigarette butts? I've seen people dump their ashtrays right in the middle of a parking lot. Who's going to keep this place cleaned up? And I do think there's two very big elephants that haven't come out. One of them is the compressor noise of those buildings. How, how is that gonna be of, like, calm down so that we as seniors, and we are seniors? My husband's been through an aneurysm, cancer and open heart surgery. And if we want a place to believe, trust me, we're on pension, pensioners. We don't have a lot of money. I'd walk straight across my backyard to the Grand Spirit Foundation for a place that I could afford. That place isn't going to have people coming and going the way that this construction is. The other elephant, what about the homeless? Boy, what a great place that's gonna be for the homeless. They're gonna be cuddled under those little bunches like this all along there. Is this something I want in my backyard? We have it close enough to us now. And I worked for the city ten years ago when they said, oh yeah, we're gonna have homeless cleaned up in ten years. Is it cleaned up? No, it's nowhere close. So those are the two elephants, is the noise and the homeless. I really don't think there's any one of you that wants your six and seven-year-old grandson, grandchildren to be around this kind of facility. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to me this afternoon.
All right, and it'll open it up to council for questions. I had a couple of questions for you. You referenced a restaurant and a bar and I wasn't aware of any such facility. I'm wondering what your thoughts, where that
Well, the one that came up on the website says that there is a restaurant and bar in the ones that you are, I, I, well, showing that this is what we are expected to have in our backyard.
Sorry, counsel, is anyone else aware of a restaurant or a bar in, okay, thanks. Second question I had
Just a concession, potentially.
Oh, concession?
Concession.
Oh, okay. Where you can buy a hot dog and a pop, et cetera.
Well, there's still going to be fans and the smell from the cooking. I still don't think it's something that we want in our area.
Okay. Uh, and that's, you're right to have that opinion. I was curious about the homeless that you referenced, why you think there'd be homeless more around a recreation facility than there would potentially be around a housing project?
Um, well, uh, looking at the building, it sure looks like a nice cuddly little spot to put your little tent all the way around. Looks ideal to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Like, we have trees in our backyard and doesn't take much for them just to take a little tent or something and cuddle up somewhere warm.
Okay. You are aware of the policy that people can't just put tents where they want, correct?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, I see no further questions from council. Thank you for coming today. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next delegation, Ms. Leslie Clark Sawchak. Please come forward. Introduce. Okay. Not a problem. Come on up, Michelle. And if you could introduce yourself for the third time tonight, in case we're not sure who you are. We would appreciate that.
Uh, I'm Michelle Gardner, and I'm representing Leslie Sawchak. I feel like I'm in, in law, court. Um, so Leslie is our resident researcher. I just have to give her kudos. She has done more research on this than I think anybody. You know, Colt was the door knocker and he's, he knocked on all the doors. So Leslie made this really cool two-scale with a map of what this would look like in our backyard. So these two big blocks here are the apartment buildings. So very similar to what Grand Spirit.
Just so, as you're pointing at, can you put them on the X and then?
Yes. Okay.
And then we'll get an overscreenshot of them. Perfect. Thank you.
Sorry.
Not a problem.
Oh, no, it's very cool. This is very cool. So this is the apartment buildings on the west side of 96th Street. And these are the houses, the 12 homes. Whoops. Dorian's always house fell off.
Tornado came through.
So this is the sort of 12 homes that I referenced, and this is the big field that's currently there. I think this piece of land is owned by the province, or we, I'm not sure. So we sort of were playing with this, and we couldn't figure out how we were going to get this onto this piece of land. So, you know, we could sort of get it up here, keeping in that this land may not be the city's. Um, so we sort of played with it like this. I mean, honestly, the best place to put it would be right here and get rid of the outdoor soccer fields and have this all be parking. Um, just based on that, having said that, as many people have referenced, it's an eight-story building. Um, so that was, this is what we, we could see. Um, the other thing that Leslie really wanted to talk about, um, is that these, we already have a mostly absent neighbor that is the Swan City Soccer Club. Outdoor soccer begins in May and goes through June. They play in the evenings, approximately 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. throughout the week and during the day on Saturday and Sunday. At the end of the school year, there are some summer act teams that use the field in the evening, but largely the field sits empty. When soccer is active, our cul-de-sac becomes the first choice for parents and players to park. It is nearest the change room office. There is simply no parking available for the fields. The parking that did exist at the south end of the field was removed when the Activity Reception Center went in. During soccer hours, our small cul-de-sac is packed with visiting vehicles. Often driveways are blocked or even used by soccer. Yes, it happens, making it a challenge if someone has a family get-together going on. Because the field is mostly empty and there is visible damage to the building and equipment, we seem to experience increased numbers of homeless people using the deck or hiding in the trees that flank the field. We also have to endure the endless graffiti that the soccer building is a target for. It takes numerous phone calls to get them to do anything to stop it or clean it up. I have been looking at a broken deck, torn-down chain-link fencing, obscene graffiti-broken deck, lechers, and garbage gets worse each year, and it has only increased since the now famous graffiti wall experiment. Teenagers in the neighborhood still say that they have permission to spray paint. Out of sheer frustration, I have moved the furniture in my living room so that I do not have to see the mess anymore. We choose to live here. I am able to walk around the field in the evening and see the sunset. When I was a caregiver to my grandchildren, they enjoyed many hours playing at the soccer field, both on the playground and on the field. Now they are teens. They like to hang out with friends at the park. Since the two apartment buildings went up on 96th Street and the city installed a new playground, locals are using the park even more often. Having the sidewalk installed on Park Road has increased the number of pedestrians that visit the neighborhood. I have also spent many hours watching happy kids play soccer, fly, soccer, fly kites, be kids. I'm a total, I am totally a fan of soccer, just not the absent neighbor. I was so hopeful last year when some of the new coaches painted the building and the numbers of players increased lightly. Unfortunately, they never finished painting the building, and they have not been back since September. The graffiti is out of control right now, a real deterrent for families who may want to enjoy the playground. It is for these reasons that I am opposed to any consideration to increase the footprint that our absent neighbor will occupy. The dome that is being considered is massive and cannot be downplayed. It will cover over three acres of land, and that does not include parking. It will stand a staggering 84 feet tall, the equivalent of an eight-story building, and it will need additional land for parking. Based on six teams of seven-on-seven plus coaches, there will be 100 people on the field at a time. There is also requests for 2,000-seat bleacher. I can't even do the math on what that may be required for parking. My neighbor has made the case that at least 525 stalls at minimum. I am guessing that this facility would need two times that many parking stalls. What a total eyesore this gray giant, this giant gray balloon will be with its parking lot, venting system, and other accessory buildings that may be required. My land is quite far from the proposed location, but that doesn't mean my quality of life would not be impacted. I would still see the dome looming above the houses across from me, from my backyard. I would no longer see the sunset when I walk around the soccer field. If anything less than 1,000 parking stalls are installed, I would likely continue to experience the parking problems that exist every evening and weekend in late spring to early fall. But now I would be impacted in winter as well. I agree with the school board that this facility should be in Avondale if it is to be used most effectively by schools during the day. I agree with other delegates that favor Avondale for all the reasons that were discussed in earlier council meetings. Additionally, across to our downtown residential neighborhood is extremely challenging for out of, sorry, access to our downtown residential neighborhood is extremely challenging for out-of-town visitors. The RH designation for land use should remain, and Grand Spirit Foundation should absolutely be allowed to proceed building much-needed affordable housing. We need more neighbors with driveways and balconies. We need permanent residents, not people visiting for a couple of hours a day from other parts of the city. I implore you to consider carefully when making a decision on location and ask that you do not put this facility where we choose to live. It will not help the residents of Smith. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll open it. Counsel for questions, Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Michelle, for, uh, tending to Leslie's, um, delegation. Through you, perhaps Leslie could tell me, in speaking to the residents overall.
I might have, I might have a heart attack.
Oh, don't.
I might.
Okay. Just as, this question is to you because you seem to be the information gatherer. So I just want to get your opinion on when you, when you talk to all the residents that you've spoken to, what is the flavor for a Grand Spirit build overall? So I understand yours through your letter, but majority?
Majority.
Significant majority?
There were two people that I spoke to that said that they had no opinion. Everyone else was in favor of residential housing.
And how many people did you speak to? Just?
Everyone on my street. I live right on, I live right on the corner of, um, 95 and 98. Right. This is my house. I spoke to everyone on this side, and I went down this side.
Okay.
And two people declined to answer.
That's okay.
Like, they had no opinion.
That's okay. That's perfect.
And my across-the-road neighbor works for Grand Spirit.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. No, that was my question. I will be asking administration in regards to if that dome went over the outdoor soccer space, what does that look like too? Similar to what, I know you showed us.
There was some talk of putting it like that and still maintaining some of the soccer field.
I don't know. We're going to ask them. But, in any case, just to get all the.
There was some talk of doing it that way. But really, that dome is huge. And it's going to be there for 30 years.
I agree.
They, there's a perfect spot for it up in the north end of town, right next to everything else, recreation, with a parking lot.
And that's why you're all here. I see that. Yes. Thank you.
All right. I don't see any further questions. So I want to thank you for coming. Thank you to Ms. Gardner.
Want me to leave my model?
Very nice. Thank you for that.
We also have three more letters that I'll hear that.
Okay. Perfect.
Mary is sitting in the back, and they were.
We don't have to take this model home.
It's such a nice model. I, I did, actually, don't go yet. I did have a question. It just came back to me. Give me a second. And I lost it again. So just bear with me for a second. In regards to, um, the soccer association, I, I know that Ms. Gardner mentioned that recently you spoke to them, and you've lived in the neighborhood a long time. Um, has the soccer association ever been a good neighbor? I have to ask.
They were so good last year.
Okay.
I think the board changed, and so there were new young volunteers that, you know, really came, came through, and they were spending more, more and more time at the field. They paint, they painted the building, which was hugely helpful. But the minute it was painted, because there was a sign at one time that said, leave your art here.
Oh.
So, so it was actually on the building that said, put your art here. Show us your best, best art. So they took the sign down and then they painted the building, hoping that that would stop it. But it needs, there needs to be someone there. There needs to be some security, or there needs to be user groups in the daytime. So it looks like there's someone home, I think. And, and, I mean, they, these guys have jobs, and so they're not at the field in the day.
Yeah, for sure.
And that's when all this damage is done. And I don't know that it's local kids necessarily.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming today as well. All right. Uh, I'm just going to check my agenda here. I see no other delegations, so I wanted to thank everyone who came tonight. Really appreciate that. We have no reports, and we'll move on to committee business. First, item 8.1, the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting of April 11th, and I'll turn it over to Counsel Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, first of all, I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held April 11th, 2023, as presented.
Perfect. That motion is in order, is in order. I see no one in the queue. I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, have a couple items of business.
Yeah. First of all, I would move that council fund the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie in the amount of $10,000 for ESL courses for Ukrainian refugees. And just to speak to this, the Rotary Club's been doing an exceptional job of helping Ukrainian refugees settle in our community. They get them apartments. They get them set up with how they do various government paperwork and other things about how the committee works, and they connect them with jobs. And they've been able to do that thanks to about $140,000 worth of private donations to the community, but also $100,000 grant from the city. And it's gone a long way, but they're out of money. And one need they did identify is funding for English language classes for, for refugees. I hope the council will support this. I think it's just the right thing to do. People that have lost everything and are showing up in our country, helping them understand the language is just the right thing to do. But also from an economic perspective, when I talk to employers, labor is the number one need. And I know we've got refugees arriving in our community that have skills our community desperately needs, but they can't share with the community because they don't have good enough English yet. So I think that this is the right thing to do, but it's also good for our economy. So I hope the council will support it.
Thanks for your motion. Your motion is in order. I had one quick question, and then I'll go to Counselor Thiessen. Uh, Counselor Bressi, in your motion, did you have a, a suggested funding source?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Um, the committee did not, did not recommend a funding source. Um, I'm open to things from administration, but maybe I'll add, just for the sake of discussion, from council strategic initiatives, funding, or is there somewhere else that?
Maybe let's ask Ms. Whiteway if there was a suggested funding source.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. We had been, uh, looking to see if there was other grant opportunities and such. There was not. And my recommendation would be council strategic initiatives fund, and it is also where the original 100,000 was funded as well.
Perfect. So you're good to add that to your motion, Counselor?
Yes, please.
Bressi, thanks. Counselor Thiessen?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Uh, thanks, uh, for the motion, Counselor Bressi. I'm not opposed to this. I do recall, uh, speaking very adamantly that we should include, uh, English as a second language training in part of the original funding group. Uh, but I can go back and check the tape. But I wish that we had that there because it's kind of late in the game. We got about a year's worth of Ukrainians that have come in. Uh, I guess my question for you, Counselor Bressi, as I am in support of the funding, uh, just, uh, how many, how many Ukrainians, refugees is this going to support? Uh, as far as English as second language, I'm sure the delegation must have told you.
Counselor Bressi?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Counselor Thiessen. I'm definitely open to being corrected, but my understanding is that it costs between $2,000 to $4,000 to run a class, and that can service a couple dozen people. So this is, this would service dozens upon dozens potentially, but I'm very open to correction if somebody's got a better recollection than me.
I hear from Counselor O'Connor that it was potentially suggested to be a couple hundred.
Excellent. Even better.
All right.
A hundred. Awesome. Cool.
Uh, I had a question for you, Counselor Bressi, as I see no one else in the queue. Uh, was there consideration given, um, I know the, uh, the Rotary, Rotary Clubs are specifically focusing currently on Ukrainians, refugees. Was there a conversation at all for Rotary to, uh, offer ESL services to other immigrants that came to Grand Prairie?
So my, again, somebody with better recollection could correct me, but my understanding is that this wouldn't actually be a Rotary Club-funded initiative. What it would be is the Center for Newcomers regularly offers English lessons, and this would be them partnering with this, basically.
Expanding, expanding exists.
Expanding that. Also, I want to go back to something that was just mentioned, uh, just pulling up the, pulling up the form of the original funding we give, gave. 5,000 of that did go to English languages as well. So they did cover some language lessons with our previous funding.
Perfect. I recognize Counselor Black, Blackmore.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. My understanding, uh, from what I remember of the meeting is that this would pay for two, two separate English language classes and also two, uh, preparatory classes for permanent residency.
All right. Thank you for that information. Counselor Bosch?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yes. Just to, uh, add to your comment, Counselor Bressi, it was basically, um, council had asked the delegation, uh, where there's gaps still in this, and, uh, this certainly was a gap at $10,000. And the other gap was housing. So that is a bigger issue to, uh, deal with than, than English lesson language or lessons.
Somebody else may need those, but, all right. Thank you for your comments, Counselor Bosch. I, uh, see no one else in the queue. Counselor Bressi, did you wish to close?
No, I'm okay. Thank you, Mayor Clayton.
I'll call the question on this motion that is in front of you. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Bressi, you had another item of business.
Yeah. And boy, you folks made me sweat on the last one. Maybe I should have let Counselor O'Connor present it. Anyways, I would move that council allocate 710,000s from the Future Expenditures Reserve for the continuing funding of the Public Security Unit from April 2023 to December 2023. And just to speak to that, in the Steve Grand Prairie, we're leading the way in Alberta for having a tiered response to policing and make sure that we're sending the appropriate resources, the appropriate calls. And one of the things we've noticed in the community is for minor social disorder and some other very low-level calls, such as checking on alarms or dealing with trespassing with somebody who's not posing a danger to anybody, that those were tying up significant police resources. Or even, even worse, maybe, they were never getting a response because the police just didn't have a chance to respond. And so the Public Security Unit's been a very positive program to give proactive patrols to places where it needs it, to move people along for property when they need to, to help enforce rules in municipal facilities. It's been well-received by our staff and more importantly, by residents to date. So I would encourage council to support this for the rest of the year. Um, that was me speaking for committee with my committee chair hat on. Speak for me personally. I know I did share some reservations at, um, committee about whether. Speak for me personally. I know I did share some reservations at committee about whether or not this is something we want to permanently entrench in our budget. And I do think that we should have conversations around, is twenty-four-seven coverage needed, especially in the winter months? When it's minus twenty out there, I don't think this is nearly as important as in the summer months. And also, going forward, we've made significant investments in support of housing investments. And I think as we get people off our streets, we're gonna see less need for things like this. So I do think that council, when it comes to the fall, should have a fulsome conversation, along with the Police Commission that'll be running by then of, do we still need this the same degree it's at right now? But I think for now, it's definitely needed, and so I hope that council will support funding for the rest of the year.
All right. Thank you for that motion. The motion is in order. I'll recognize Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am in support of this motion. I do see on a day-to-day basis what the Public Security Unit does do in assistance with the mobile outreach team, enforcement services, and our RCMP. It is a tiered approach that is necessary in this day and age of dealing with crime or potential crime. I think advocacy in regards to proactive patrols is equally as important as reactive decisions that have to be made once something has happened. So I rather see money put into proactive approaches that don't result in the more expensive and the more traumatic issues that come up with crime. So I will support this.
Thanks for your comments. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I was really excited. I was actually not in this chair, but I was in the back listening to the two-and-a-half-hour-long discussion that was generated through this committee meeting that day. Counselor Bressi said that he'd have some amendments, so I'm a little disappointed to that. But nevertheless, I am all in support and favor of this motion. I know what our security team's done. Thank you very much for helping us to keep our businesses and residents safe, especially in the core area where we're seeing a bit of that unruly crowd coming out. This may also be, I only jumped in the queue just to mention that this may also be something in the future that we could look at when we're talking about our policing and potential deployment of different police units while we're building the system moving forward. So just an idea for future, put it in your cap, but I am in support of the motion, and thank you to our security team for keeping our streets safe.
For that, Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Didn't get to hear all of the debates as I was traveling last week, but I did catch some of it. And I'm actually a little shocked and a little bit disappointed that Counselor Bressi doesn't have a motion to make. But I can say for me, I'm okay with this now, but I would certainly hope by the fall, and I don't mind a multi-tier approach, when we start opening a bunch of buildings, I'm gonna really struggle with this being a twenty-four-hour service pass this fall. For me personally, I do think when those winter months hit, I don't know why we need twenty-four-hour service, and we're both to open up a lot of doors that we're supposed to help a vulnerable group in our community. So I feel at some point, as good as this is today, I'm only supporting it today because those doors aren't open yet in our community, but I'll have a harder time supporting this moving forward once we have our Courting Care Campus fully operational and our building just beside us here fully operational. Support of it for now, probably a tougher time come this fall.
Thanks for that. Counselor Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Couple comments. First off, just want to stress that this goes throughout the entire city. That if there's some issues, irregardless of where it's happening, they're there to respond. And just anecdotally, I support it as well. It was Saturday afternoon, and I was a witness to trespass and some theft. And a call was made, and the security unit was there within minutes and handled the situation and recovered the items and dealt with it, freeing up again our police forces for more serious matters. So it was quick, it was responsive, and it was the level of policing that was required for the situation. But also, when we are looking at overnights policing over the summer, just a deterrent is these units are traveling around, and they're visible. I'm quite confident that we'll see less incidents as well, just through that visibility.
Thanks for your comments, Counselor Berg. I see no one else in the queue. If you wish to close, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm getting thrown under the bus for not making amendments, but it's my motion that I'm making on behalf of the committee, so I can't actually move amendments. That being said, there's amendments coming later in this meeting, so I want you folks to remember that you asked for them.
Welcome to change the motion, though. Let's be clear. That's your close, Counselor Bressi?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Seeing no, that was Counselor Bressi's close. I'll call the question. Please vote. Counselor Bressi?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Bressi, in favor. That carries unanimously. Some highlights from your meeting, Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So we had Mr. Berg and Mr. Chabot came in, and they talked about and they talked about the Legion Field area and the track and the long jump pits and all of that. And it was some really good, robust conversation, and I was especially excited as Mr. Berg was talking about effort in the community to fundraise money and find some non-municipal dollars to significantly improve the area for future generations of kids and others to compete. And we did ask the mayor to write a letter of support to support grants applications, so look forward to big things on that side in the future. We had South Peace Archives came in and gave us an update, which was much appreciated. We had an update from our Enforcement Services Department about there's been concerns with residents in some neighborhoods about Foxtail weeds coming from especially undeveloped areas, and especially the concern there is the danger that there is to pets. So we heard about some of the new approaches that our staff, our bylaw, in conjunction with our Parks Department, are gonna be taking to use provisions that already exist in the Municipal Government Act and in other city bylaws to better get on top of Foxtail weeds early this season. The other thing I'll highlight from the Director's Service Area update was that administration was successful in obtaining a three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for a settlement integration and language project to enhance community capacity to attract and retain newcomers and assist deployers. So we just gave some money specific to Ukrainians, but there's a greater investment coming for people of all backgrounds coming into the community as well. And the last thing I'll highlight from the Director's Service Area that I'm excited for is we're on track to see body-worn cameras on our RCMP by May 1st. We're one of the pilot communities for that, and I think that's a good advance of policing in Alberta, so glad that we can help the province figure out how to do that.
Perfect. Thanks, Counselor Bressi, for your update. Moving along to the Financial Administrative Services Committee meeting held on April 11th, and I'll turn it over to Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So I move that council adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held April 11th, 2023, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Some highlights from your meeting, Counselor Blackmore.
Well, it didn't have too long a meeting, so the highlights are just that the Assessment and Taxation Assessment Appeal Deadline has passed. There has been sixty-two appeals received, one residential and the remainder are commercial or multifamily. Administration has hosted a design lab with internal departments to explore options for social procurement. Council will remember that this is something that has been on our horizon for a while, and so we'll be looking forward to seeing what those activities could look like. Finally, administration has just wrapped up the audit for the financial annual town financial statements, and that will be presented, I think, at the next meeting. And that is everything we really talked about.
Great. Thanks for that, Counselor Blackmore. Moving along to the Invest GP Committee meeting of April 11th, and I'll turn it over to Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to move council adopt the minutes of the Invest GP Committee meeting held April 11th, 2023, as presented.
Thank you for that. That motion is in order. I'll call the question. Counselor.
Sorry, it's not coming up in favor?
Counselor Plot in favor? And that carries unanimously. Highlights from your meeting, Counselor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. And First Economic Development Administration was at an economic development conference in Edmonton, and I'd like to temporarily pass the ball off to Chief Harrop.
Mr. Harrop.
Thanks, Counselor O'Connor. Yeah, we're very pleased and proud to announce that the Invest GP team won the Economic Developers of Alberta's Award of Excellence for Economic Development Renewal. This was attributed to the planning and implementation of the recent downtown incentive program, which enabled downtown businesses to invest in themselves through matching facade grants, patio grants, and demolition grants. The program was widely accepted and implemented, and it had a big impact on the downtown core. So please join me in congratulating the team, and on behalf of the team, we thank you for the council's support.
Great news. Thank you for that update, Mr. Harrop. Any other items you wanted to highlight, Counselor O'Connor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to also recognize one facade grant was approved, one barrier-free grant was approved, and one beautification grant was approved. And then the renewal, rural renewal, I can't get my tongue today. Rural Renewal Stream Program had five hundred and seventeen positions identified, a hundred and eighty candidates endorsed, two hundred and ninety-four employer apps in progress approved or complete, and the investment attraction attended Petrochemical Can West Conference and looking at emerging opportunities in the petrochemical industry. And lastly, the Events and Entertainment Area PBR is holding a bull riding at Bonnet Center September 30th and October 1st. And with that, I conclude my report. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor O'Connor. Appreciate that. Moving on to the Operational Services Committee meeting of April 11th. Turn it over to Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I move that council adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held April 11th, 2023, as presented.
Perfect. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bosch, you have one item of business, if you wanted to go ahead with that.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We had previously asked administration about a covered outdoor structure for a rink, whether it be used for hockey or skating in the winter and ball hockey and perhaps the mobile skate park in the summer. Currently, this covered outdoor structure has come in significantly higher in cost than we originally had anticipated. So there was a motion made at council that council approved three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five in additional funding from Council Strategic Initiatives Fund and reallocate the one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Sargent Community Outdoor Park Rink capital projects to enable replacement of the current outdoor rink at Swanhaven with a covered outdoor structure. So in speaking to this, this is my motion. I didn't originally make this motion, but it comes on my plate at this point. I do have some questions, and I hope that we do have a significant discussion about this structure at this council meeting.
Thanks for that. That motion is in order. Open it up to discussion or debate. Counselor Bressi.
Great. May I ask a question of administration?
Absolutely.
Great. If council wished to just resurface the rink and replace the boards, how much funding would be needed to not build the roof, essentially?
Mr. Glavin?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just to be clear, it's to resurface, so take what's, essentially replace what is there in its entirety?
Yeah, that's right. My understanding is it's becoming a non-functional hockey arena, so basically if we wanted to maintain a usable boarded rink but without the roof, what would we need to spend?
It'd be plus or minus, so three hundred and fifty thousand, plus or minus, based on current estimates.
And three hundred and fifty thousand period, or in addition to five hundred thousand that's already there?
No, that would be within the initial five hundred thousand, so three fifty total.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm just, to administration, I'm just wondering if we were to look at putting the roof later, following on what Counselor Bressi has brought up, wouldn't it be advisable to put the foundations and everything in prior to doing that, just in case? Or is that, and what would that cost?
Mr. Glavin?
I'm gonna ask our Director of Parks, Case DeVries, to come up. He may have that cost.
Welcome, Mr. DeVries.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. With regards to the structural component without the cover, because we have the ability to reuse the dashboard set from the Leisure Center in conjunction with a concrete structural slab, that estimate is around three forty-five to three ninety.
So we wouldn't have to go backwards if we decided to put a roof on. You've got the structural slab there, and then you could install it later. If budgeted, so declare. Is that right?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My understanding is yes, that would be possible.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So further questions for administration? I'll recognize Counselor Blackmore.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I am wondering if it is administration's intention to complete this project this summer prior to our fall budget review.
Mr. DeVries or Mr. Glavin, sorry?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. If with approved budget, is our intention to construct this year?
And Mr. Glavin, can you tell me, because I keep hearing different numbers pop up here, what's the total cost if they go ahead with the pool shed as we originally intended?
So new boards and the cover, et cetera, full cost, Mr. Glavin?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So the total cost, and let me just do very quick math here. So it'd be nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars is what we are currently, what the current estimate is. And just to break down how that works, so that's five hundred thousand currently budgeted in the capital plan, a reallocation of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Sargent Outdoor Park Outdoor Rink Capital Project, as well as an additional ask of funding of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars that's currently proposed from Council Strategic Initiatives.
Perfect. So just to clarify, five hundred thousand dollars is already funded. You're asking for additional dollars. This is an entire new concrete pad, using the boards from the Leisure Center, as well as putting the covered structure over the hockey rink space. All right. Counselor Blackmore, did you have something else?
Oh, that's everything. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I appreciate that this motion did come to council and so that we can have a discussion about this. Mr. DeVries, is this a metal roof? It's metal, right?
Thank you, through Mayor Clayton. That is correct.
Was there any investigation on like the PVC roofs or the fabric roofs? I just find the number of poles holding this roof up to be like absolutely insane. I don't know what's going on there, but I have not seen a shed or a bull shed that has that many poles holding up a roof in my life.
Through Mayor Clayton, this is the design that we obtained from a third-party engineering firm, and so we deferred to their expertise on the construction materials.
I think I'd get a second opinion, in all honesty. I would like to see some investigation on different type of roofing that perhaps that cost isn't going to be so high. Five hundred thousand to begin with is significant to put a roof over a rink. It's not like we're building the building here, so I would like to see more investigation into this.
Thanks for your comments. I will just remind you that you're not speaking against your motion. Thank you. I am gonna jump in the queue here. I do have other counselors. I just had a question. Mr. DeVries, you referenced that it was based on a third-party drawing. If I recall correctly, when I saw the third-party drawing, it was a wood facility at that time. So I wonder if potentially that's why there were so many poles in it, and if there was consideration, the engineering firm that potentially drew this did give consideration to the change to metal if there was still the infrastructure to consist as drawn, which of course would obviously add to the cost. as drawn, which of course would obviously add to the cost.
Yeah, maybe I can clarify, Mayor Clayton. The design and the rendering that's attached within the report, it's a wood frame with metal cladding over the top for the roof surface and metal cladding around the poles along the side.
So there was no costing done if the structure itself was metal, which in turn could mean less poles? I see Mr. Glavine ready with some answers. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. When we did initial cost estimates for budget last fall, to do a steel structure was in the neighborhood of 40-plus percent more expensive to do it, so we were trying to do our best to stay within budget, so that was essentially the instruction.
Perfect. All right. Council Bressi.
Great. I'm gonna, are there more questions? So I want to start.
There's quite a few people, so let's wait for discussion or debate, if that's okay. Councilor O'Toole, question for administration?
Yes, I was just going to ask if this building would be powered, would it be lights and anything else that would go in there?
Mr. DeVries?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. There would be lighting, yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So I just want to confirm, so it's about 350 if we just put a boarded structure. So there's 615-ish thousand is the roof and the lighting and the cladding and all the things that would come with it. If we didn't go with the structure, is there still lighting on the facility that we utilize, or would there be another add-on top of the 365-ish or 340,000 that you mentioned for the boards and the slab? I believe there's lighting currently, I'm just not sure if we'd be upgrading the lighting that's on that site as well.
Mr. DeVries?
Yeah, thank you, through Mayor Clayton. That estimate would include some additional electrical work as well, so to ensure that the lighting is up to standard.
So within the 340 or the 965 number, sorry?
Through Mayor Clayton, both numbers include the lighting component.
Okay, so the lower number already has that as well, okay.
So for clarification on that, I just, council reply before you ask your second part, the structure itself is approximately $600,000.
Through Mayor Clayton, yes, that is correct. The structure, yes, that is correct.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So just because there are so many numbers being thrown around here, so when we're talking about replacement as is in Swan Haven is different from what is initially, where what was proposed to committee. To replace it as is, it's wooden boards, it's an asphalt structure, asphalt base, and it's smaller than what is being proposed. So when you add in concrete and larger surface area, that's why the costs are starting to get larger on what administration proposed. So if you're trying to do the math on putting 350 with, you know, the other 350-ish and why is it only 700, that's why. It's because what we're proposing is larger than what's currently there.
Council Palat?
No, that's, that helps me. I guess I'm struggling with spending the other 615,000 or in that range of putting us, as much as it would be nice, I think if we still have a useful, actually, it sounds like we're going to have an upgraded facility from what we have there that's bigger. I'm struggling with supporting the rest of it. I just got to hear some more debate here.
Councilor O'Connor, question for administration?
Yes, my concern, having built Robertson Steel Buildings for a better part of my career in construction, I see nothing here that would cause the building not to rack, and that's a very important component for a building. So I'm wondering if administration could let me know if that racking consideration has been considered.
So I think, as mentioned, this is a wood structure that's wrapped in steel, not a steel structure.
But it shows are steel columns in the drawing that I saw.
Nope. They are wood.
Then there would still be a racking issue, so I'm asking administration.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I can't speak exactly to the issue that's being referenced by Councilor O'Connor, but due to the height of the building, is my understanding, is why they have so many columns that you have there, but ultimately we're relying upon a professional engineer to design this. I can't speak to any of the potential issues.
So an engineer draw, engineer approved drawing? Okay, thanks. I had a question, Mr. DeVries or Mr. Glavine, just a clarification. If the facility itself, the structure, not the rink, not the asphalt, the structure itself is approximately $600,000, and there's currently $500,000 budgeted, correct?
Yes, there's $500,000 budgeted, and when we're talking structure, we're talking like over top of the concrete pad.
Sure.
And actually, perhaps look at Mr. DeVries, if he happens to have that broken out. I know we do have a pretty detailed cost estimate.
Sure. Mr. DeVries?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, so the site work, whether covered or not, is about 140.
Okay.
To do the concrete surface is anywhere from 2 to 250, so that's that element.
So just before you go too far, the site work, assuming that the location is Swan Haven, so not always in perpetuity if council was to put further facilities such as this?
Correct.
That's the current site work?
Yes, Mayor Clayton, that is the current site work for that site, yeah. So that's about 140. The concrete surface, that structure that needs to be added in is between 205 and 230, and then anything remaining is all the structure piece.
Right, because the boards are coming free from the leisure center?
That is correct.
Okay, so then to go back to Councilor Palat's question, if council were to not approve an overhead structure, the site work would still need to be done, and the concrete slab would still need to be done. The lights that are currently there would not be usable, correct? Or is there, I'm, does Swan Haven have lights? I can't recall, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. There are some lights there, but we would look to upgrade that for the site.
Okay. So you would expand the concrete slab, you would do the site work, use the boards from the leisure center, and not put a roof over it? If that's what council decided? Perfect. Okay. Any other questions before I go to discussion and debate? Seeing none, I'll go discussion and debate. Council Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. For me, I would urge council to defeat this motion, and then I've got a subsequent motion to make, to make sure that we still do site work. I thought about just making a motion to amend, but I struggle to think how we could amend this, so I'd encourage council to defeat this motion, and then let's talk about what to do with site after. And just to speak to it, it's, I get why a covered site would be really desirable, and when we first started talking about $250,000, we thought these might, or at least my understanding is what they might have been, maybe my misunderstanding was completely misfounded, but when I had an early mind of $250,000 in my head, I thought, yeah, that would be really great for the community. And then when it, then when I started hearing numbers about $500,000, I started going, oh, I don't know. And now that we're looking at a million plus for, I know that's not just the structure, that's also the groundwork too, but it's just getting to be too much for, too much for me, for the community impact. So I really believe for this, we should redo the surface, make it bigger, add concrete, add boards, make sure the lights work, but for me, I just, the roof would be awesome, but I don't know if it's worth the price in my mind. So I hope the council will defeat this and then give necessary direction to make sure that improvements still do happen to that site, because it is a rink that's very, getting very difficult to use.
Council Berg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I actually think this is something that I want to support. It's an area of the city that has a lot of character, and I just, I've loved the concept since I first heard it. I will agree that the price tag is a little bit higher than what I thought, and as far as, you know, going about the number of poles, again, this is engineered, we face certain liabilities, you know, we face some wind, so we need to make sure that this is engineered, and I, as a councillor, am not qualified to remove poles and which ones, so if that's what engineering says is required, then I trust that. And so this is something, again, unless something startling comes out of the conversation, I think it's actually something that I want to support, and give it a test run and see how it is utilized, and from there, maybe we add another one or two around the community to different neighborhoods. So I like the idea.
Thank you for that. I'm going to recognize Council Blackmore next. I just, I'm going to sneak in a question for administration. In your consideration, was there asphalt considered as a pad, or does it have to be concrete because of the weight of the ice and the boards?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Because of the use of the dashboard system that we have, obviously to reuse that existing system, it needs a concrete footing, and so the concrete slab is just part of that process.
Potentially in future locations, asphalt could be considered if it was a wood board-type arrangement?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. That is correct. We could consider asphalt. Obviously, concrete has a longer life, of course, especially when we're flooding it with ice and water every year. So concrete's preferred, but asphalt is possible with a different board system.
Just curious. Thank you for that. Councilor O'Connor? Sorry, what? Oh, sorry, Council Blackmore. Go ahead, Council Blackmore.
I'm wondering, you know, when we started looking at pole sheds, they didn't seem to be this expensive in other communities, and so I'm not sure I can support the motion as it is right now, but I am curious if we have looked at what other communities are paying, what kind of structure other communities are using, and I mean outside of the county, because I know they built one in the county that was also pretty expensive. So I don't know. Mr. Glavine, is that a question that you can answer?
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. We did look at Bezanzin, as they've built a structure that is similar, it's not the same, but it's similar to this. They built it over a number of years, I think the construction was over seven years, if I'm not wrong, starting in 2011. The total cost, and this isn't adjusted for inflation, so these are costs that were born over, you know, between 2011 and 2018, was 427,000.
Does that answer your question, Council Blackmore?
Yeah, I think that I would have to say at this time, I don't think I can support this motion. It seems quite expensive, more expensive than the value it may bring to that community, the community of Swan Haven, so I will not be supporting the motion.
All right. Councilor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My memory serves me right that a pole shed, poles need to go in first, then the concrete slab to go in. You can't add the poles after, so I won't be supporting this motion.
Mr. DeVries, did you want to confirm that?
Through Mayor Clayton, I did have a message from our Director of Corporate Facility Management that did indicate that the poles could be added later in this situation.
Thanks for that. Councilor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. You know, we've talked about this, and it was, I guess, a dream, and I didn't think it was going to be this expensive, so for me, I'm struggling with supporting this. You know, I do think it'd be nice, but when I think it would be nice, it's winter time, and so now you're not seeing the stars, you're seeing a covered rink, and as much as I think there's cool things about this, I don't know how well it's going to get utilized any differently. I'm not sure if people are going to drive across town just because something's covered in the wintertime. Doesn't make it warmer, lighting's not any better, so I'm not sure there's a lot of advantages there as what I originally thought. Also, in my head, was originally thinking this would be great in the summertime, but it'd be more why I'd see a covered structure. I think we're talking a lot about building facilities right now and putting the money towards actual facilities that could be used year-round. Makes more sense to me, so I just, I can't support the amount of funding this is going to cost at this time. And hearing that, I do think, you know, Councilor O'Connor, I may disagree on some of the engineering on this, but I do think that this is something we could revisit later on, and we're not harming the community now, and it's a big upgrade for this area. It is, we are still putting a significant investment in the Swan Haven area. We're putting a bigger, newer concrete rink with upgraded lighting and site work, it sounds like, so I do feel like we've still put back in the community in that area by doing this, so I do urge councillors to defeat the motion like Council Bressi had mentioned.
All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, I will see, oh, oh, sorry, Council Teason, you weren't there a second ago.
No, I was in there for the last 10 minutes.
I apologize, please.
It's all right. Accidents happen.
10 minutes, I don't think. That's okay.
No, I was there for a while. Yeah, no, as far as I, my recollection is, we were talking about covered outdoor structures. Now, whatever form that that took at budget time, whether that's covering rinks or whatever, I know we had endless possibilities. I think for me, I was thinking gathering spots, or small little roundabouts, like basketball nets and stuff like that, that we could flood for a small rink to have like a little community skate in the wintertime. To do the whole structure as a whole rink, I think is awesome. I think it will be awesome. I'm looking at an example of it, and it looks like it can be used for summer and winter use. Basketball, you know, we could do all sorts of stuff, probably throw sand in there, do a little beach volleyball, hopefully at the roof's high enough. The reality of the situation, though, the cost is definitely a detriment to me. It's pushing back on me right now, and I'm not opposed to it, I just, I'm not 100% sure Swan Haven is the spot for such a big structure. I'm thinking we have Muscoate Park, we still got to develop that, we got other parks in and around the community too. If we're going to spend a million dollars on a covered rink, I'd want to be at a place where thousands of people can go and will go to every single day because the park itself is a draw. Swan Haven's awesome. I love that neighborhood. Maybe if we're talking across the street at Lyons Park, I'm sure we have to tear up some trees, I wouldn't like that either. But anyways, I'm struggling with this. I may be a yes, but I want to hear some other supportive debates, but I need to be convinced. Thank you.
Thanks for that. I'm going to jump in the queue before I go to Councilor O'Toole. I will support this motion. I think from the beginning that it's been a priority of council to be able to provide recreation space that is four-season, and this space, as mentioned, is a gathering space in the summer, a reprieve from the sun. It's a place where you can play basketball in the summer, it's a place where, that is lit, and you can skate with your family and your little kids at certain hours of the day when you don't want to be part of a shini game. It's an area where you can gather and have birthday parties, you could use remote control vehicles. There's multiple uses that could be in this. Is it expensive? Absolutely. Is that unfortunate? For sure. However, if we didn't have to replace the existing, the groundwork, the concrete pad, in my opinion, these initially were going to be spaces that could be asphalt-covered, that keeps snow off the ground, so kids can go inside and potentially play in the winter. If it became a skating rink, great. I agree with Council Teason. I didn't love this being the first location of one. There are areas, JP2, for example, the school there needs recreational amenities. There are areas such as Roy Bickle, where there's land adjacent to neighborhoods that could utilize this space. It is what it is right now in the sense that it's convenient that rink boards need to be replaced in Swan Haven at the same time, so the project ends up coming bigger than expected because we're doing more work than initially expected. It's, as mentioned, there is money in our budget for this. This would be a great amenity. It's in a neighborhood that has older residents and people that have lived there a long time. It's adjacent to a school, so those kids in that elementary school could go out in winter and play in the covered space where the snow is not on the ice, where they could, kindergarten kids can go out and have some recreation in the middle of winter. I think it's a great amenity to a neighborhood that is an aging neighborhood, and it will bring people to an area adjacent to a Toboggan Hill. So a Toboggan Hill, a covered rink space in the winter would be a great amenity, and so I think that although this came in higher than expected, and it's the first, in my opinion, of many opportunities across our neighbor, or across our city, I encourage council to support it because a four-season recreational asset in any neighborhood is a win, and the residents of Swan Haven would be very proud of this. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much. I don't think there's anybody here more disappointed than the price of that would come in, but if we look back over my years on council, the East Link Center come way over what we budgeted, we built it, and it's being used. The bridge on 68th Avenue was way over budget, but we needed it, and it needs, and it's been used. I can go on and on. Nothing doesn't seem to be on budget anymore, and I don't know why, but when I go grocery shopping, it's not what I used to pay anymore, and I think it's just a way of life. We can blame COVID, we can blame whatever, but at the end of the day, I truly believe this may not be the spot that I would choose first either, but for all the reasons Mayor Clayton spoke on, this is a great location because there's not anything up there either. There's a school beside the building, but it's, I just think that I'm going to be supporting this. It hurts me to say that I want to spend a million dollars on it, but sometimes facilities are priceless, and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. Before I go to Council Bressi to close, I just had one last question. Sorry, Council Bosch to close, not Bressi. Counselor, or Mr. Glavine, you mentioned that one of the funding sources was the Sargent Community Park Outdoor Rink Fund. Is there expectations, then, that that facility would have naming on it, or is there still opportunities for sponsorship through another naming facility, another naming rights opportunity?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. There'd be no expectation that it be named after anyone at this point. That money was put aside, I think in 2018, for a potential project. There was some geotechnical investigation on the site. The site was not conducive to the build due to, essentially it was that there was a burn pit, and they'd have to do a lot of geotech in order to figure out where to actually put it and get around that area, but, so no, it could be named, but it doesn't need to be named at this time.
Great. Thank you for that. Seeing no one else in the queue, I'll go to Councilor Bosch to close.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Can I add something to this motion now, or is it too late?
Well, we can, you can ask if council... Well, we can, you can, you can ask if counsel, if, let's see, if is it a friendly amendment? What is your suggestion?
My suggestion is, since I can't change this, or, or can't speak against it, I would, uh, I would say this motion, um, once investigation has been done on other types of roofing.
So that changes the intent of the motion quite a bit. What I would suggest is that you would look to postpone, um, the motion for additional information, but this motion is in order, you'd have to get this motion defeated first and ask administration to bring back additional information on a, an supplemental sort of structure is what I would suggest.
So I can ask for it to be postponed?
Uh, you can't, but someone else can.
Well, the reason I, I'm saying this, the reason that this motion came through to begin with is to bring it to council, to bring it to table so that it didn't get lost. And I appreciate that, but I just, for me, uh, I would like to see if somebody would postpone it just till we got a little more information. I don't think it'll change the date of getting this done. If, if for instance, we went with a, so Mr. DeReeves, if we went with a PVC or fabric roof, would that still be done this year?
Uh, through Mayor Clayton, the information we have from our corporate facilities team is that the pole shed design was the most economical in this situation. Um, from that team, my understanding is that, uh, it is possible to get this through and, and completed this year. Obviously, there's a lot of, you know, issues in terms of, uh, materials and, and things like that. Uh, if it's delayed, then we may run a small risk of not being able to have it complete by year's end. Um, but that is the information I have at this time.
So when I asked earlier if anybody investigated the PVC or the fabric, um, they have or they have not?
Through, through Mayor Clayton, this was the only design that was looked at for, based on its economic, um, outlook, I guess. So if I can correct that, Mayor Clayton, when we went to the engineering firm, we, we knew that we needed to get something that was, uh, most economical. This was the design that was put back to us. And so we don't have specifics on different types of roofing options. This was the design that we were, uh, we were provided.
Cause I'm comfortable with the site work, you know, with the boards and the concrete, um, where that, that is a hundred percent, I'm, I'm for that. I just, I have some concerns about the roof. But if no one is willing to postpone this, then, uh, then I guess we vote.
Okay, I see no one else in the queue, so I will take that as your close, Counsel Bosch, and call the question. Please vote. And that is carried five to four. Moving on, I'm just going to get caught up here if you give me one second, Counsel Bosch. Highlights from your meeting, please.
Okay, well, um, other than this pole shed, or I mean skating rink. (laughing) Skating rink.
(inaudible)
Chief Glavin, uh, did speak about, uh, Earth Day, which, uh, Mayor Clayton had already spoken of earlier today. Uh, we talked about the city scrub being underway. Uh, and if anybody wants to be a part of that or getting cleans, cleaning supplies, go to citiescrub@cityofgp.com. We talked about, um, so this is a week ago now. And 10 days prior to that, there was some contamination to Bear Creek. Uh, booms were placed to mitigate the effects of this release and administration was providing reports to Alberta Environment and Protected Areas and Environment and Climate Change Canada as required. And now the, I, I don't know, uh, maybe Mr. Glavin, if you could, do you know if anything has changed since then on that?
Mr. Glavin.
Sorry, uh, I apologize, I was just completing another task in the last motion.
No, just on Bear Creek, it, how has the mitigation gone on, on the contamination that was in the water?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, to my knowledge, it's all been mitigated at this point. Um, but, uh, I haven't had, uh, anything to the contrary anyways. The last update I had, they had it in control, under control.
Perfect, see what a week does, takes care of business. And other than that, we were talking about, uh, in transportation, cleaning, uh, is in full swing with crews, uh, out and about all over the place. And I'm sure everybody has seen them, as well as Parks is, uh, in the midst of cleaning up litter. That's all I have to report.
Thanks for your update, Counsel Bosch, moving along here.
Mayor Clayton, may I raise a point of order?
Please.
I'm sure it was an unintentional slip, but I feel an apology to our assembly and others would be in order.
Thanks. An apology for your language. Just apologize for your language is what Counsel Bressi is asking. It's good.
Because I mis, mis said the words of what the building was? I apologize for that, yes. Because I had brought it up in, uh, previous, uh, investigations, so that's why that came up.
All right, so moving along, I, item 8.5, the Strategy and Communication Services Committee Meeting of April 11th. Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council adopt the minutes of the Strategy and Communication Services Committee Meeting held April 11th, 2023 as presented.
Thank you for that, Counsel Berg, that motion is in order. I'll call the question on the item that is in your package. Please vote. That carries unanimously. Couple items of business today, Counsel Berg.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council approve policy 125, land acknowledgement as presented. And just to speak to this, this has been something that has been brought up, uh, a handful of times around council, uh, asking why we don't do a land acknowledgement. And it was an excellent point, so we put our team on it, including our indigenous liaison, uh, Warren. And, uh, they came back to council with this, uh, land acknowledgement proposal, which, uh, I encourage our council to support.
Thank you for that, I, uh, I'll go to Counsel Bressi and then I'll jump in the queue.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. No, I'm very excited to see this come to council. I think that land acknowledgements have been happening on this land for centuries with, uh, people that were governing this land before us. And I think it's very appropriate for us to participate in that tradition, both to acknowledge the history of our land. And also for me, it's a reminder that we're building on the work of countless generations and we've got work to do for generations to come as, come as well. So I think that this is important, not just for the relationships that we'll build with our indigenous community, but also for, for all people. Um, so I'm enthusiastically supporting this policy. But Mayor Clayton, before you move on to the next agenda item, assuming this passes, I'll have another motion of business I'd like to do.
Um, I too will speak, uh, in support of this motion. I know that, uh, significant amount of work was done by administration in consultation with various indigenous leaders across the region, looking for input on this. Uh, this is a piece of work that we need to be proud of. It was significantly, uh, an investment of time and, and labor from our, from our administration team. So thank you to them for the work that they've done and I will support the motion. Thanks, Counsel Berg. I see no one else, if you wanted to close, if not?
Uh, no need to close, I, I thank you both for, uh, adding to, uh, the comments.
Counsel Bressi, you're in the queue for next time, right? Okay, I'll call the question, please vote. Counsel Plott.
Mine's not coming up, Counsel Plott in favor?
Counsel Plott votes in favor. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Bressi, you had another item.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I, something that's still not clear to me is that now we've got a policy that council just approved, talking about using this formal meetings, but I think that that should be reflected in our procedure bylaw as well. And so I would move that council direct administration to present to the appropriate standing committee necessary amendments to the procedure bylaw to add a land acknowledgement into Schedule A, Orders of the Day. Um, for those that don't know the procedure bylaw, back and forth, that's basically the agenda template we use for, uh, we use for all council meetings. And my understanding is there's amendments to the procedure bylaw coming anyways, so I don't think this would be arduous work for administration to do. But I still think it would be great now that we've passed the policy to show what our intent is to use it with our formal meetings.
So I'm just, so I'm clear on your motion, Counsel Bressi. Your motion is to add it to the procedure bylaw. In turn, council, when that procedure bylaw comes back for review, we'll have an opportunity for discussion and debate, correct?
Yeah, that's right, it's say administration, bring forward the amendments, we need to do that, but we wouldn't be passing that today because we can't pass a bylaw without that notice.
Thank you for that clarification, Counsel Teason.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Clayton, I'm okay with this motion. Um, and, and I don't mind putting into procedures. I imagine it would go, uh, fairly similarly underneath, uh, the general principles of the policy where it states and dictates where we would be using that in printed material at the start of meetings for every day. So, so yeah, I don't think it'd be onerous at all, so thanks for that.
All right, so that motion is in order, seeing no one else in the queue, I will call the question. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Berg, you had some other items of business.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move that council endorse the 2023 to 2025 Indigenous Relations Framework. Again, another comprehensive report, uh, very in-depth, another great job by our team. Uh, as I read through it, I was quite thrilled with a lot of the actions that, uh, they were addressing around truth and reconciliation. Uh, there were a couple of areas that I thought we could, um, uh, round out a little bit, but as I stressed in our, uh, committee meetings, I see these as initial first steps to give directions. And when I map out in my mind where these directions can go, I actually get quite excited with the potential as to where they could go and the benefits to our city and our community, along with the benefits of, of relationships. Uh, some of the things that, uh, we had commented on, uh, around indigenous business and indigenous tourism is one of the pathways that, uh, this can strengthen, uh, indigenous business. Um, and, and a lot of different opportunities. So again, this is simply a framework that we could start building upon and taking those initial first steps. So I strongly encourage council to endorse, uh, the 2023, the 2025 Indigenous Relations Framework.
Thanks for that motion, is it in, it is in order, I'll recognize Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I also pass on kudos to our staff and to Warren on, on the in-depth work that they put into this report. I was surprised at how many of the steps to reconciliation they included, very impressed. So I'll be supporting this motion, thank you.
For your comments, Counsel Plott.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Clayton. I'm sorry, my apologies because I wasn't at committee last week, so I did have a question for administration if I'm, if I'm able to. And I'm just curious, when I look at this plan, when I look at the Alberta government budget for 2023, that's going to invest nine million into new reconciliation grant programs and 15 million into building safer provinces for indigenous women. Can, can a minute just give me an idea of how this plan integrates in with that and how, how that would work with when the province flows money through? How does our plan adapt into that to see that we're getting some of this funding in our community? Or is that the goal of this plan? I guess for, for me, I was hoping we're going to get more funding to help this. Just wondering how this plan fits into when the province makes announcements like this. What's, what's our next steps, I guess, because of this plan?
I'll just direct that question to our Chief of Staff, Ms. McKechnie.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm actually, uh, with your permission, we'll have, uh, Director Trent come up. I know that, uh, he's looked at this, uh, in depth.
Mr. Trent, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and, and through the chair, uh, absolutely, we are, uh, working at identifying all the possible grants to, uh, help us to achieve some of the, uh, calls to action and some of the action items identified within the, uh, framework. Uh, we do recognize that some of the first steps that are identified within the plan here is that there's some assessment that needs to be done, uh, in terms of, uh, you know, a lot of, some, some of the, uh, actions are assessing city facilities and, and looking at culturally, uh, appropriate spaces. And we know there's going to be some capital dollars associated with, uh, uh, some of those, some of those actions. Um, you know, some of the inclusion of culturally, uh, of, of cultural indigenous artwork and, uh, uh, spaces at the museum, um, various things. And, and so, uh, we do, we are aware of, there's, there's a number of grants and we have our, our new grant coordinator, who is, uh, that's, that was her project number one, is identifying all the grants that, uh, we could access and make available, uh, to carry out, uh, a number of these, uh, initiatives.
Yes, Counsel Plott, does that answer your question?
I, I guess so, this, this framework helps us enable that even further than what we're currently doing.
Mr. Trent?
To go after grants?
Yes, through the chair, absolutely. So, uh, like I said, the, uh, the first step is, is assessing what some of those costs will be, right? And, and so those are, a number of steps are identified in here. And, and once we have those costs, uh, we will then go, uh, be putting, uh, budgets together towards, uh, how we, how we're going to action, uh, some of the ones that, uh, that will require capital dollars. A number of them are, are, uh, activities that we can do, you know, internally and within current resources and within current operating budgets. And we, you know, intend to continue, uh, working towards those. But the ones that do require those, those capital, uh, budgets will be, uh, assessing and coming up with a plan for and, and accessing as many grant dollars as possible to, uh, to be able to carry out.
Okay, thanks.
All right, seeing no one else in the queue, I will go to Counsel Berg in case you have anything to close.
Yeah, actually, just one thing that I do want to add that I missed, uh, in my initial comments is that, uh, extensive consultation with our indigenous partners was also undertaken, uh, through Warren here at the city, our indigenous liaison, um, and going forward, that is also a key part of what this, it will involve is, uh, indigenous consultation as we move forward. So these won't be arbitrary council, uh, decisions or administrative decisions, uh, decisions, but rather in consultation. So again, great first steps and thanks, Rory, to you and your team.
Thanks for that, close Counsel Berg, I will call the question, please vote. Counsel Plott, how do you vote?
Well, she likes me every other time, in favor.
Counsel Plott votes in favor. That carries unanimously. Counselor Black, uh, Counsel Berg, if you wanted to continue.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Uh, we have a little bit of business around bylaw C-1461, the Assessment Review Board Bylaw. Again, this is just a matter of housekeeping, from what I understand. This had been amended so many times that it, the language around it became awkward. And, uh, so it was cleaned up and, and made far more efficient, uh, for our bylaw books as were required. We are to review our bylaws on a, on a regular basis for relevance and language. And so this is one of those items that we're doing some housekeeping on.
Perfect, so your first motion, if you would?
I will, uh, I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1461, being the Assessment Review Board Bylaw.
Thank you for that, that motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call the question, please vote. Counsel Plott.
Counsel Plott in favor.
Thank you for that, Counsel Plott's in favor. That carries unanimously, Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would like to move council give second reading to bylaw C-1461.
All right, so that motion is in order, opportunity for questions for administration for discussion or debate. Seeing none, call the question on second reading, please vote. Counsel Plott.
In favor.
Thank you, Counsel Plott votes in favor. And that carries unanimously, Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1461 at this meeting.
That motion is in order. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, this motion must pass unanimously. Seeing no one in the queue, I'll call the question, please vote.
Counsel Plott in favor.
Counsel Plott votes in favor and that carries unanimously, Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And I would like to move council give third reading to bylaw C-1461, being the Assessment Review Board Bylaw.
Perfect, that motion is in order and I see no one in the queue. So I'll call the question on third reading of bylaw C-1461, being the Assessment Review Board Bylaw. Please vote.
Counsel Plott in favor.
Counsel Plott votes in favor. And that carries unanimously. Counsel Berg, any highlights from your meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton, just let me try to.
No worries.
Bring it up here. All right. So we got a service area update from Chief McKechnie on a handful of things, major projects. The Brandon Hasbun Strategy Survey has now closed. Uh, 1,154 residents surveyed, 63 visitor surveys and 251 potential visitor surveys submitted. Uh, strategy's underway for various components, uh, of the Grand Prairie Police Service as well. Uh, City Clerk, a new administrative policy development framework has been completed and sent for design work. Uh, in corporate communications, I think this is actually rather exciting. Initial testing of the new events page is complete. A centralized hub of all the activities happening in our city will finally be in one convenient location and it will be serviced through the city. So that is something that's been needed actually for decades, so it's great to see that that finally is moving forward. Uh, so again, compliments to the team. And over in HR, administration is collaborating with the police transition team on an HR strategy and the recruitment for a chief of police is underway. And we've already covered off the indigenous, uh, [inaudible]. And we've already covered off the Indigenous Relations Framework that we covered. And with that, Mayor Clayton, that's my report.
Thanks for that. Yeah, I too wanted to highlight the events page. I know a lot of significant work went into that. Mr. Tarenta, in his interim role, had a lot of work in that, as well as many other people in our organization. It's something we hear on a regular basis. How do I find out what's going on in our community? So I look forward to this being a item that will continue to be enhanced, where you will find great information. So thank you to administration for the work that went into that. Moving on in our agenda for tonight, there are no items of correspondence. We move on to delegation business. There were six delegations tonight. Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm happy to move that we receive information that are relevant to the conversation tonight. So I don't think we need to do more than that right now. But I really do appreciate these residents for coming in, talking to their neighbors, engaging with us. I'm sure that all of council has heard from these, from residents of this neighborhood over the last week or so. And I really want to commend them in that it's always been respectful for me, which is actually sadly unusual when people oppose the decision we make. Usually you have a fair amount of uncivil disrespectful. And these folks really are, I think, are showing the community how you should do advocacy, which is standing up for what you're, what you think is right, but engaging in a civil way. So don't know which, if it'll go the way they're hoping or not, but really appreciate them sharing their thoughts.
Thanks for that. And so your motion is to receive all of them for information. Thank you. That motion is in order. I will call the question on receiving all six delegations for information. Please vote. Counselor O'Connor, how do you vote? Not a problem. That carries unanimously. And yes, thank you for highlighting that, Counselor Bressi. A reminder to those who are watching, please, you're welcome to come to council, speak to us. It's a very simple piece of paperwork that's required in order to do that. But I also encourage community residents to continue to engage on engage.cityofgp.com. It's a relatively easy piece of application. It gives you, lets you pick and choose the information that you'll get a regular update on. And it's a very simple way to be informed of things that are happening in our community. So thank you for that. And I will now, we, there are no notices of motion. I apologize. And we will now recess, take our recess. We are scheduled to be back for six o'clock. Thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon and welcome back to the evening session of the council meeting of April 17. Under today's evening agenda, there is one slight change, item 14.3, an update to policy 357 will be brought back at a further date. So we will start under unfinished business with item 14.1, proposed recreation facility. I'm just going to open that with that and look for an introduction from administration from Mr. Lemieux, our chief public and protective safety, protective services officer.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So the report being presented to you today was a team effort of the several departments, recreation, culture, planning, engineering, information technology, GIS, corporates, facility maintenance and communication. So we'd like to thank the team because they've put a lot of effort in preparing this documentation and background information. So as a result of the upcoming demolition of the leisure center, there are limited indoor recreation spaces within the community. Council has approved in principle up to $10 million through DeBenture for an indoor recreation facility. At a council meeting on January 9, 2023, Swan City Football Club proposed a multi-sport four-season air structure as a potential solution. An air structure of the size being proposed requires approximately 4.5 acres of land inclusive of parking. So the ideal facility would serve a diverse range of recreational and leisure needs, including rugby, lacrosse, cricket, ultimate frisbee, ball diamond users, football and scores partners. Multiple parties have indicated an interest in operating this particular facility. And from a land use, from a land use perspective, three sites are under consideration as a potential location for an air structure indoor recreation facility. And in alphabetical order, those three potential sites are Avondale, Cobblestone East and Smith. This administrative report includes a transportation analysis and preliminary site plans. In the city's GIS department prepared animation slides that show the shadow effect of the proposed air structure. And also it's worth noting, as been discussed earlier in this meeting, that for the Smith site, it's currently zoned as high density residential, which may include buildings that would cause some, some type of shadow effect. And I'm pleased that Ms. Ms. Casely has joined us this evening and she has a presentation that will show the three sites and shadow effects of a 135,000 square foot air structure. So following those slides, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Ms. Casely. If you'd like to take it away.
Through the chair, so the GIS department has done an amazing job of preparing some conceptual drawings for us as well as the animations that you're about to see. So all of these files are available on the city's engagement platform. There's a page dedicated to the proposed recreation facility. So for the purposes of this evening's presentation, administration will show one still photo from each location and it's all of a northwest configuration. And then also the same applies to the animation that you will see. It is all dated for December of each site so that you're getting the same kind of information for each potential location. So the first one is a conceptual drawing of the Avondale site. This would be an animation showing the shadow figures for a December date. This will be a still photo of a potential configuration for Cobblestone East location. Oops, sorry. And finally, for the Smith location. That's the end of the presentation.
Sorry, Ms. Casely, do you mind going back to the first one? My orientation was off in regards to where you had footprint for the Avondale.
Still, or would you like to see the video?
Or just the still? Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, opening up to questions. And just before we do, Ms. Casely, are you or Mr. Lemieux addressing either the attachments in the package? Or they just there for information? Council can ask questions on them.
Thank you through the chair. I wasn't prepared to make any presentation related to that, but certainly available for questions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Counsel Bressey.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Definitely appreciate the presentation and it's great to be getting a better visualization what this could look like in the end. Want to preface this question by saying apologies to administration in that I probably should have asked this question a meeting or two ago. But something I realize I'm not clear on is why we're only considering these three sites and why the CKC campus just west of the grandstands isn't in consideration.
Thank you through the, through the mayor. So in, at the initial report, seven locations were identified as potential sites for this facility. Three of those were recommended for further evaluation, which are the three that were presented this evening. Based on recommendations and information that we've received from the recreation and culture strategy in trying to geographically spread the recreation amenities throughout the community. The CKC campus was not selected as part of the review for this particular site, but certainly that is something administration could do if council wishes.
Counsel Bressey.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. And just follow up to that, when you say that seven were presented and three were recommended, can you refresh my memory? Was that administration recommended these three be considered or was that a council committee recommended these three be considered?
Thank you through the chair. That was an administration recommendation.
Excellent, thank you.
Counsel Berg.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Just to confirm, the date that you used was December 21st? Just simply because that's when the shadows are longest and the sun is at its lowest?
Thank you through the chair. In all honesty, there were several animations that were done and the, of, of the three times of the year that they were chosen, the month of December arises first in the alphabet and is at the top of the list.
Oh, okay. Again, but it would also equal the, the shadows being the longest and the worst case scenario.
Counsel Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just a question on all three locations, it looks like there's about 200-ish parking stalls planned in on, on all three of them. Is that, that was kind of the thought of just kind of having an equal number on them all?
Ms. Casely.
Through the chair. So based on the proposed site plans, the parking lot ranges anywhere from about 200 to about 238.
Okay, and I'm just curious, it would be really hard to figure out numbers on those. I've been in these facilities lots and it's hard to figure out what numbers, but I'm just curious why, how did that number was come up? Like, how did we decide on 200 or 250 stalls per these locations?
Ms. Casely.
Certainly through the chair. So the initial budget for this proposed facility was based on the activity and reception center build, which has, has about 104 parking stalls. I'm knowing that the facility would be larger, certainly some, some additional spaces were added to that for the purposes of the concept drawings. It is difficult to estimate the occupancy load of the building without having some of the known entities like the number of entrances and exits for the building, overall space, those sort of things. So this is something that certainly could be looked at as we, as we pursue down the path of detailed design if council approves the project.
Just still on the parking, is it, can I keep going? Just looking at the comp site specifically, did administration do a quick count or has done a count on what the current east side of the parking lot would have? That's already there. That was the old comp kind of site, that's new comp parking lot. And also the, the old, I called the front parking lot of the comp when I went there, but the old west side of the comp. Have we, have we got an idea of what sort of numbers are already built in those locations now for parking?
Thank you, thank you through the chair. So the leisure site parking lot has approximately 285 stalls adjacent to the site. Right now, there's some additional parking on the soccer pitch and also North Muscipe, which would be like Elks Hall area, has about 49 stalls. I'm not, I do not have parking stall numbers for the composite parking lot or the Peace Wapiti Academy site. But the east parking lot currently adjacent to the leisure center as it stands right now is scheduled for removal as part of the demolition.
And is, sorry, what, is the parking lot where the comp used to park on the east side, is that city owned land or is that, there's, there's a bunch of different landowners in this area? And I'm just trying to get my head around, was this city owned land or is that public school district land or the current parking lot that the comp would be using now?
Ms. Casely, do you know that?
Through, through the chair, if you can give me a minute, I can check on them.
Okay, and I, I had asked administration, I was going to come back to that later about a slide that had kind of all those different.
The long-term.
Yeah, the long-term plan for the comp site.
Somebody does have that. Mr. Glavine, if you wanted to share your screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I do have both the long-term plan on here as well, if you'd like me to show that as well.
That'd be great.
Okay, so it looks like, if I'm guessing, it looks like some of that city and some of it's not, but some of that would be city parking, it looks like. Thank you for.
And sort of this then, based on what you see as a long-term plan here, doesn't really align with where the facility was put. It would be over the recreation parking there? Is that correct? Like, it's, it's the potential recreation facility in the blue box on the long-term plan, it's been moved to the west, correct?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. I had a question on parking and then I'll go to others in the queue. Oh, sorry, just a simple question. There was no increased parking accounted for regardless of the size of the facility in the drawings, correct? You kept the parking the same from what I can count?
Thank you through the chair. So the parking lot for a 115 square foot dome structure was slightly less than the, no, sorry, the other way around.
135 to, so you did add a bit if the facility was smaller.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, thanks. Counsel Tiesin.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question.
Just a question in regards to the placement on the comp site. I'm looking at it right now. What, why didn't we try maybe a little bit to the north as well? Is that just we're making room for what's in the long-term plan for high-density residential? Or was there any discussion about moving it a bit more north on the site?
Ms. Casually.
Thank you through the chair. Certainly there's flexibility in that, these are just conceptual drawings, so just trying to give an overall idea of what the site could encompass.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and the only reason I ask that question actually is just, I like the placement and seeing that shadow is really, really good. But some of the issues that were coming up in Smith with being too close to residentials and then just on this site placement, it's, it butts back onto about four or five houses, I see. So that would be something that we might have to take in with neighborhood if that's where we decide to finally place it.
Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Counselor, or thank you, Mayor Clayton. Along the same train of thought, I know that a concern that was raised in Smith but would potentially apply to any neighborhood was the sound of it from fans to keep it inflated. I also don't know how soundproof just the walls are, but I confess, I've been in these lots, I've never really stood outside and listened to the sound. Do we have any idea what sound impacts a dome might have on close-by residential properties?
Ms. Casually.
Thank you through the chair. So one of the vendors that administration has been working with to supply information to prepare reports has indicated that on average, they see decibels in the 40s and 50s at 100 feet plus. So that measurement was taken with no other barriers surrounding the unit. So if a fence or some other type of acoustic barrier was installed, they would certainly expect to see that that would reduce the ambient noise level.
And just for reference, Ms. Casually, how does that compare to an outdoor soccer game? Do we know? Like 40 to 50 decibels, I don't know what that reference is.
I'm not sure.
Counsel Bressi.
Maybe a question for Director Glavine that I'm sure he'll know is, what's the decibels of the CHP we've got at the listening center? That's something where I know the noise level of.
Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I believe it was approximately 50, 51 is where it was tested and when we're done our mitigations, it's likely going to be below 46.
Great, thank you.
On that same vein, then, sorry, was that decibel measurement while the game was happening or just the operations of the facility?
I think through the chair, administration is not able to answer that question.
Okay, Mr. Glavine.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. And just some additional context on the decibel reading, it really does depend on your distance from, so it's depending on where it's located, where any of this equipment is located on the facility will have a significant impact. So for example, if you put it on the west side of the facility in Avondale, probably mitigates most of the impact to the residential.
Counsel Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. My question is for Ms. Casually. The shadows that you showed, the little shadow videos that you showed, did you choose those particular locations because they had the least shadow impact on the residents in those three areas? Because I noticed on the reports that Mr. Lemieux started to present, there's other options for placement of the dome in each of those locations. And I'm just wondering if you chose to do the shadow, to show us shadowing on the three less, the sites that were less impacted by shadows.
Ms. Casually.
Thank you through the chair. So the shadowing was done based on the conceptual drawing. So in the Smith subdivision, that concept was prepared to achieve the most amount of parking. Just give me one moment, I'm going to pull up.
No problems. I think in the reference was to have us maximize the separation as much as possible from residential, correct?
Thank you through the chair, yes, that is correct.
I'm just, Counselor Blackmore, did you have something, a follow-up on that?
Not at this time.
Okay. I just had a question before Counsel Bressi, Ms. Casually or Mr. Lemieux. On the current Activity Reception Center and the parking stalls, I think you mentioned there's about 130, is that what you mentioned?
Through the chair, approximately 104.
104? Remind me what's planned for the land that's in front of the parking spot where currently on the map it just says Activity and Reception Center. Is that intended to be landscaping? I know it was a snow pile during the winter, I just can't recall what that's going to be.
Through the chair, do you mean like the northeast corner of that lot or?
Southeast corner.
So currently that is just a berm and intended to be used for like a toboggan hill in the winter.
Okay, so it potentially could be enhanced parking in the future?
Through the chair, yes, certainly with some additional investment in terms of grading and that sort of thing.
Perfect, thanks. Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. A question about the Avondale site is, a personal hope I have, I don't know if it's a majority counsel, but a personal hope I have is to get a pool on that site eventually. Has any work been done looking at if we build on the Avondale site? If there's additional opportunity in the medium term to build an aquatic facility or other recreation facilities?
Ms. Casually.
Through the chair, I do have a potential site plan that would include the proposed recreation facility as well as an aquatics facility.
Just want to show that? Do you need a minute?
Just one moment, please.
Can you entertain us in the meantime, Counsel Bressi?
I'm just so excited right now. I will do whatever I have to do.
I'll take that back. I'm going to go to Counsel Plot while Ms. Casually has a moment. Counsel Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Director Glavine had that slide up of the proposed area and I think there was two colors up there and I just want to confirm, there was a pink color and another color around it. One was multi, I believe, and one was commercial. I'm just wondering if you can clarify.
Would you mind pulling your slides up?
Sorry, on the long-term, is the yellow area, that's the potential multifamily site area?
Orange.
Or orange, sorry, colorblind, and red?
Red is commercial.
Okay.
Can you see the difference?
Yeah, I see the difference. I might be colorblind. Do we know what the acreage or hectare size on each of those would be, just for reference? I'm just trying to get my idea around how big a multifamily site that potentially is.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I don't have that, but that's something we could probably estimate relatively quickly, but we'll probably need a minute or two.
Yeah, not a problem.
And just one other question and we'll give Ms. Casually a little more time. I'm just wondering, if we were to put it in the Avondale site, has administration ran any numbers of what it would look like to do the road opening as far as actually having that road go right into 108th Street and line up the lights when now that we have access to that? Have we done any preliminary numbers on that as far as what it would cost to punch road out to 108th Street?
Mr. Glavine, as a transportation question, I'll direct it to you.
I was busy working on the other question and I missed that question.
He's multitasking.
Could you repeat that one?
Have we done any cost estimates on punching the road through onto the former bypass?
I recall very high-level estimates at the time, but I have none of that in front of me at this point.
Okay, so we'll come back to Mr. Glavine. Ms. Casually.
Thank you through the chair. So these are just in PDF format, so I'll have to open them one at a time, but. So this is through the chair, one potential option of what the Avondale site could look like with a large facility parking lot and then a proposed aquatics or recreation facility adjacent to that.
Can I ask you a question while you're on that slide?
Certainly.
Ms. Casually, if that facility, that multisport facility was a court sport facility, would it be the same size in estimation? I mean, it could be as big as we want to get that, but would a proposed court sport facility, I would assume that it wouldn't be nearly as large as a dome, correct?
Through the chair, I would estimate that it would be smaller. And the proposed aquatics facility size was based on the actual dimensions of the recreation facility in Beaver Lodge that houses the pool.
Perfect, thank you.
So through the chair, same type of facility, just a different drawing with the parking lots and everything included?
Now, can I really challenge you technically? If the multisport facility potentially was as drawn out in the long-term area redevelopment plan, which had a proposed recreation facility in the bottom, sort of bottom left of the current, would it still be an outdoor field adjacent to the recreation facility to the west of it? So it would go aquatics, outdoor field, court sport facility?
Through the chair, administration hasn't done the measurements on that, but I'm sure that we could accommodate some type of recreation green space in the plan.
Thank you. Counsel Plot, are you good on this? And I'll go to Mr. Glavine before I go to Counsel Thiessen. Mr. Glavine, are you prepared for? I can't even remember what Counsel Plot's looking for at this point. A road? No, I don't think that's not where, yeah? Okay.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So I don't have the road estimate, but very ballpark estimate, so that's roughly two hectares for the multi and roughly one hectare for the commercial. Those are very ballpark estimates, but that's approximate.
How many acres in a hectare again, remind me, please?
There's two and a half acres in each hectare, so.
Okay.
Seven and a half?
Yep, thank you. So twice of the land space currently in consideration is Smith where Grand Spirit has indicated they need. Okay, Counsel Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. Just a question, Ms. Casually, in your research on the dome structures, is it possible to connect the dome structure to any other facility similar to like portables on a school? It's like, I would imagine you probably need some kind of entranceway where you can connect from one entry to another. But all this talk, I heard about court sport facilities and aquatic centers. One thing that I think would be really cool for a gigantic enormous recreation complex is if each building could be connected, so if people needed to move between sports indoors, they still could. Is that a possibility with these structures?
Ms. Casually.
Through the chair, yes, certainly, that is a possibility.
Awesome, thank you.
And just a reminder to counsel, there still is no motion on the floor, so we'll continue with questions for administration, but Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you, Ms. Casually. I'm just wondering, when we looked at the dome in South Edmonton, there were a number of bathrooms, atco trailers, then a fixed facility. And following up on what Counselor Thiessen is asking, is that it wasn't very professional not to run down their facility, but I think it's important that we connect bathrooms directly to the building and to have facilities. So if they added another facility, let's assume to the north, that we could put that facility in between to meet all the needs for meeting rooms or bathrooms or whatever, because the ones in Edmonton were not very good. Is that a possibility?
Ms. Casually.
Through the chair, yes, certainly, that is a possibility.
So with that then, should we be asking for some budget numbers to see what that looked like? I don't know, we're way ahead. We're not ahead enough in the design to be able to look at that, but I think it's something, because of the amount of square footage it might take up, I think this may impact what the future of the building is going to look like.
Ms. Casually, can you remind me, in the up to $10 million that counsel has indicated an appetite for, in taking a debenture on, was there washroom facilities in that estimate?
Thank you through the mayor. Certainly as part of that estimate, there was some small locker rooms, public washrooms, and what is described as ancillary space, which could be like a small office or a storage room that was included in that budget proposal.
Does that answer your question? You're good? Okay, Counsel Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Ms. Casually, that photo that you just had with the pool, can you put that up for just a quick second for me, please? Okay, that one works too. If the dome was flipped on its side compared to what we have in our package, right? What does the shadow look like going to that north parking lot, or that parking lot there? I don't know if it's north.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, administration has not prepared animations or conceptual drawings for that, so I'm not 100%.
And sorry, just to clarify, Counsel Bosch, do you mean if the dome facility were to run east-west?
Well, this way on our package, it's running which way?
What, which one do you want? That one's east-west, yeah.
So it's going north?
North to south on that one?
Yeah. So is there houses in behind the north to south?
There's, so there's.
A great deal, or is it just this parking?
There would be some houses in that area.
Okay.
So if you, Counsel Bosch, just to help you, if you were to look on attachment four A, the option, Old Comp Site 2A, you can see there's about four houses south of when the facility were, if the facility were to run north to south? Does that help?
Well, these pictures for, for the old comp site though, they're all, the building is facing east-west.
There's both there.
There's both?
Yeah. There's 2A and then 2B.
Oh, there it is, okay, okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm curious, we're all assuming it's going to be a dome, but have we done any analysis on PVC fabric cladding like they've done in Fox Creek Furnarino or other structures? Just, I just don't want to, just assume a dome's the best for us. So have we done any analysis on anything besides a dome?
Ms. Casually.
Through the mayor, no, the work has been done assuming that it would be a dome structure. That was part of the initial request.
Great, thank you.
Counsel Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Just want to go back to kind of Counselor Thiessen and Counselor O'Connor's comments, but when I'm looking at this, I'm wondering, this proposed auxiliary space of the 56 by 84, is that where we're saying the bathrooms and the ref room and the change rooms, is that where that would lie? Or is that the unit, the pressuring unit itself?
Ms. Casually.
Through the mayor, that would be the proposed change room space or auxiliary space.
Okay, and just, I mean, I'm getting in the weeds here and I just, but I'm just curious, when I'm looking at the site, were we looking at cafeteria like within that space? I'm just kind of curious what was designed in that. I mean, it looks like we have enough space to expand on it, but I'm just kind of curious within the budget, what that did include forecastly.
A concession or a cafeteria, sorry, which is your question?
Well, either or, like, I'm just wondering, because I mean, there can be a fair amount of space taken up in that as well. Just, and again, again, it's something we can add on once we get down to the design. I'm just, I'm just curious in the current modeling if that was already in it or not.
Ms. Casually.
Thank you through the mayor. In the early modeling, concession space was not included as part of the plan. It is something that administration certainly could look into based on the initial conversations that administration had with user groups. The majority of the user groups that were contacted indicated that they would forego some of those types of amenities for the larger space.
Thank you.
I had a question, oh, go ahead, Counsel O'Toole.
Thank you very much. I was just wondering, just to get the shadow effect out on picture, what is it here, option, Site B, Option 1, could we reverse that and put the parking lot north and leave, or leave the, sorry, the facility proposal where the parking lot is and just change that around? Then that way the shadows wouldn't necessarily be over top of the houses at any time of the year.
Ms. Casually, and sorry, just to clarify for you, do you mean on Old Comp Site?
Yep.
On Option 2, if you were to put the parking lot to the west and the facility to the east, is that what the?
Well, it looks like it's the north and south.
Okay, so if you were to do the north and south, so the parking lot close, more adjacent to the houses? And the proposed facility being closer to the former leisure center?
Right. Would that work out or is there any mechanical or any concerns if we were to move it, if this is proposed?
Ms. Casually.
Through the mayor, no, I think there's certainly flexibility in terms of where the facility could be situated on the site. Administration just selected the locations that it did with the hopes of minimizing the impact to the residential neighborhood.
Just a question, I'll jump in the queue here. I, maybe I'm imagining it, but I thought at some point I saw a rendering in Smith with the facility encompassing some of the existing outdoor field. And I'm just trying to find that again. I don't see it in Attachment 4 or 5 unless I'm missing it. Did we at some point? Did we at some point have a drawing that showed the facility running parallel with the Activity Reception Center? It was the Clayton model. I didn't make it in 3D. In my head, it was in, hopefully, at least 3D, but yeah. Did, did I see a drawing somewhere on some? Oh, maybe it was the lady that brought it in clay. So did, so then my question, was there any consideration given to the facility running adjacent to the Activity Reception Center? Because I recall conversation that Swan City Football, for example, was, was prepared to lose some outdoor space, knowing that they were getting a significant, if they were to get a significant indoor space, they would be able to meet their demands.
Through the mayor, no, administration did not prepare modeling that would impact the current outdoor fields.
Okay. Thank you. So I see no one else in the queue. Any further questions? Counselor Teason.
Prepared to make a motion if you'll entertain it.
You bet.
All right. I would move that. Council approve the Avondale site as the selection for the proposed soccer dome facility. Speaking to this motion, I think it was apparent and abundant that we had a lot of members from the Smith subdivision and other areas that came and had their own concerns. I think listening to our residents is important, and I want to do what's right for everybody. Based off of the, the staff report that we were given, there were lots of considerations that staff made and a lot of work that got put into all three sites. And just going down the table charts, it appears pretty logical that one spot that would probably be the best and most suitable location would be the Avondale site. And that would still save room for future developments, whether that's another recreation facility, more housing, or commercial space as, as it's there. And I think administration's done a good job of mapping it out. But I have other reasons as well, but perhaps I'll save it, I'll save it for debate and I'll see what kind of discussion we generate here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So that motion is in order. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I will be supporting this motion. I know I originally was wanting to push for it in Smith. I am concerned, though, and I do have a question for administration on if this were to pass, are we going to start another process? And my concern is, is we had a lot of people come from the Smith area because it's been topical. We've had Grand Spirit come several times. If we actually announce this is going in the comp area, do we have to do more consultation now? I, maybe we won't, but I'll be surprised if some people from the comp area don't show up and say, I'm losing my son, or my son's going to be changed, and I don't want this big thing across the road. So I'm just wondering, will this, if we make this motion today, is this done? Or will there be a consultation piece for the community? Because at this point, I think the community's been all under the understanding, we've only been talking about Smith mostly, let's hit the media.
CEO Nicolay had a comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. The, the way the motion or the recommendation is worded, it's urging council to select a site so that it would enable preparation of more detailed budgeting, design, and project planning. I think certainly stakeholder consultation in project planning to put a major facility in a, in an area of the community would be warranted. So just based on this kind of conversation, we would certainly touch that base.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. And I guess just, I don't want to assume, but I'm, is it correct to think that the council's going to have our several passes at looking at this site layout and other things moving forward before final shovel goes in the ground and we move ahead?
Ms. Casale.
Thank you through the mayor. Certainly, there'll be an opportunity for council to provide more feedback related to this project if approved.
Okay. And I'll just speak to it now and then I'll jump off the mic. But one of the reasons that I really like in this site more and more is I think from a taxpayer's perspective, I think this site will be the least expensive for us to develop. I also like the idea that it could open up another four acres of multifamily sooner than later for our community. And I think it's an ideal spot for seniors and low-income family housing. So that does excite me about this area as well. We heard very clearly from the school districts that this was their preferred location through the scores agreement and utilization. So I, I do think this is the best location, and I like the idea that we're not out of pocket to go buy other lands for Grand Spirit to put up buildings. So we don't stagnate that land at Grand Spirits right now. If we, if we choose another location, it'll have a financial implication of we have to go buy land now for Grand Spirit or for other projects. So I do like that this land doesn't stagnate, stagnate that other piece of land, and that we don't have to go out of pocket to, to build some social housing. So I like this location. Thank you.
Counselor Blackmore.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I will also be supporting this motion. As I have said, you know, for many years while on council, neighbors have the right to decide what happens in their neighborhoods. And we've clearly heard from the Smith neighborhood that they're not crazy about the idea of a soccer dome, but they're quite supportive of multifamily, which I find interesting, but, you know, it's their neighborhood. My concern with the Avondale site is I think that we need to work a little harder on how the shadowing effect is going to take place in the community. I think it will have less of an effect, certainly because it's to the north of most houses and to far enough west from a lot of houses that it's not going to have a major impact. But I know over the next, the next several weeks, our administration can certainly work on making sure that they're putting this in the best location to have a minimum impact on the neighborhood. So I will be supporting this motion. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Before I share my thoughts, I'm wondering if Counselor Teason would be open to a friendly amendment? And that is to change, I wonder if he'd be open to changing the wording in this from preferred site for the dome facility to a recreation facility? After we're done this business here, I'm going to have a subsequent motion. If I think there's another form, we should at least give some consideration to.
It's, it's fairly significant change, in my opinion. Counselor Teason.
Yeah. You know what? I'm, I'm okay with, with the dome site. I think we can cover that in a, in a subsequent motion and see where it goes after round of debate with that. But just the dome, like footprint of this?
Okay. Sure. I guess I'll make an argument against this motion subsequently, or?
Go ahead, Mr. Nicolay.
Just in the interest of moving this along and not having it mired in too much ancillary discussion, if it's the will of council, when the design comes back, so there's a lot of work to do now to start plating and design and consultation, we could include analysis of various types of structures. It wouldn't be a large incremental cost on the project design, would still give council some opportunity for input.
Okay. Great. I'm careful.
I guess my concern would be, Mr. Nicolay, that the motion is up to $10 million if a recreation facility incorporates a court support facility. We know that it's significantly more, and that is not based on this current actions.
I may have misunderstood, Madam Chair.
That's why I want, you know, for you to say a recreation facility, in my opinion, is fairly vague. I would need, yeah.
No, specifically what I'm concerned about is we've only looked at a dome. Some municipalities are also doing PVC fabric cladding, Fox Creek's.
So you still are indicating that a turf facility?
Yeah, that's right. I just don't know if, and I honestly don't know if a dome's the most cost-effective when looking at the lifespan of it for us. And so I'd love us to do a little bit of exploration of if PVC fabric cladding is more feasible than a dome.
So then, based on knowing that, Ms. Counselor Teason, are you, are you okay with the friendly amendment?
I don't.
You're going to come with it regardless?
Yeah.
Okay.
My thoughts on it is I don't think, I don't think we'll, we'll need it. And if we really want to do that, that can also be followed up with subsequent motion. My concern right now is just selecting the site.
Okay. Perfect. Counselor Bressi, yeah?
Well, in that, in that case, if we could talk about form, then I wholeheartedly do support the site. I think that it's a, talked about the Smith site, I get some of the benefits of that, but it's so rare to have serviced, zoned, high-density housing land that also the neighbors are enthusiastic about having high-density housing there. I think that that's something that is, would be a real shame to lose in our community. And as much as recreation's a priority for me, getting people into houses they can afford is an even bigger priority for me. So I think that this should go somewhere else. As for where it should go, Avondale really does make sense to me. I think that it's, it's an affordable place to build. It's adjacent to two high schools. We've got a great recreation facility next to the other two high schools we have, and so I like that. It's also near the, it's near the hospital, it's near Northwestern Polytechnic. So you talk about something that's attractive to students, attractive to doctors and other medical professionals, it's that. And if this is going to be something that hosts provincial and other large-scale tournaments, Holy Smokes, that's a corner of the city I want people to visit. There's hotels that are accessible to them, there's restaurants that are accessible to them. They're going to drive to the facility, they're going to see our beautiful Northwestern Polytechnic, our beautiful hospital, our amazing jewel of Musk's CP Park. And that really is putting forward the face of the city that I want to show to people. I also would note that if we approve it here, I think there's some low-scale community engagement that needs to happen with Avondale about the specifics. But in the last council term, we did do really robust engagement with the Avondale neighborhood and the wider community about this piece of land. And it was endorsed by the council of the day, but more importantly, by the neighborhood as an appropriate place to have indoor recreation. So again, they should have the say, a bit of say on the specifics, but in principle, the community of Avondale is behind this facility there, while the community of Smith is behind high-density housing there. So I think we should keep the two pieces of land for their intended uses.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Mr. Glavine, could you show me the long-term area redevelopment page again, please? Then I had a question, Ms. Casale, if the, if council approves the structure at Avondale, how long, it's, tell me the timeframe on starting compared to the timeframe that could happen with the Smith facility?
Thank you through the mayor. So certainly with the demolition of the leisure center will need to take place later this year before any construction could begin. So it is definitely imagined by administration that it would be a 2024 project. There are also some requirements for the Smith location, if that was the facility or, sorry, site that was selected by council in terms of acquiring some of the land and some zoning issues. So in either regard, it is estimated that the project would not begin until 2024.
So either one would start in 2024?
Through the mayor, that is correct.
Okay. And one other question in regards to, do we have any speculation if high-density housing goes in Smith lands? Do we know if Swan City Football Club will still continue to use that facility if a dome facility was built in Avondale? Considering that there are outdoor soccer fields proposed in the area redevelopment plan, what would happen? Do we expect that Swan City Football Club will still continue to use those outdoor fields?
Thank you through the mayor. I think it would depend on the scope of the project in the Avondale site. If everything was developed at the same time, that might not be the case. But if the proposed recreation facility was installed in Avondale, then my understanding is that the soccer association would continue to use the outdoor fields at Rotary.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks. Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. Counselor Bressi pretty much swept up all of my, my comments, but I have long supported the Avondale site. To me, it just makes the most common sense. I see the strengths and weaknesses as well with Smith, but with Avondale, again, there's a number of schools close by, polytechnic, hotels, excuse me, restaurants. But the arterial roads, the arterial roads, if we extend 100 and the Willie DeWitt Drive to the bypass, thanks, Chris, then the site is next to one of the major arterial roads to get people in and out, and we don't have necessarily to worry about that traffic. So for a number of reasons, I support the Avondale area. But when the election was on, I heard from a number of Avondale residents strongly advocating, thank you, Chris, strongly advocating for us to do some recreational facilities to replace what they were losing. And so this is a nice positive first step. I love that you had already anticipated Counselor Bressi's question about the pool, because that is another thing that people have been asking about. So thank you for being ahead on that and being prepared. So this has long been my favorite location, so it's something that I support as well.
Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I too will be supporting this motion that Mr. Teason has spoken of. I think that, to me, I appreciate all the efforts of what the Smith citizens and even our regional partners coming in today have to say about the Smith land, including Grand Spirit. I like the fact that the schools can use this facility all day and not have to pay for busing. Everything is right here and close. And having an expensive facility like this, regardless if it's $10 million or, or higher, it needs to be used as much as possible. So for some of those reasons and others that have been all said, I'll support this.
Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I too value the opportunity to have it in the Avondale area. My concern at this point in time is I'd like to see it away from the houses and over north of the pickleball courts. That way, there's no shadowing. It's not something big and white in front of your house. It's off to the side. But that's details we can deal with later, but I'd be supporting with it.
Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'm also in support of this project for all of the reasons. The school wants it, there's room for expansion, there will be available for parking, close to hotels, close to restaurants, might give us a path out to the highway, and potential for putting a pool. And I agree with Counselor O'Toole, we just need to not have it as it close. And I'll vote in favor of this.
I'll jump in the queue here. I too will support this motion. I agree with Counselor O'Toole's comments that I prefer the alignment to be swapped with the parking lot to the north. I know we'll come back and have multiple conversations on that. My only concern is now we have conversations in regards to sport court facilities and, and based on the footprint, I don't see it fitting here. So we will in time have to have that conversation as well. We know that there are multiple court support facilities being added to our inventory in the city as more schools are being built out and, and as that space is actualized in facilities such as the comp, Louis Real, and, and other schools that are opening. Our inter, our municipal partners have schools that will be added to inventory as well. So I think that it's something for exploration in regards to the scores agreement, that we need to look at working with our regional partners in regards to adding rec, school facilities in the county into the scores agreement, that in turn may, over time, mitigate our need for court sports for a short term. So I think the location is good. I do, I'm not sure still about seniors in Smith, to be honest. It's still not something I think is ideal, but I think that the needs of the facility are better situated now that I've seen the diagrams in the comp site. So I appreciate the time that administration's put into this. I look forward to, you know, further information being shared in regards to this. And just wanted to thank you for the effort that was put into this. There's very valuable information here. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I guess we're, I'm just going to throw my comments into that my preference would be to have the parking lot to the north and the building more to the south, or sorry, the, the model, I guess, to be option one. I'd like to see that mirrored. And also, again, we're going to have conversations, but it makes sense to me that the auxiliary space should be on the other side for access to the other parking lot and the comp and the potential users of it. I just did have one more question for administration and more of a politically sensitive question where we, we've had conversations with our regional partners. I just want to make sure we're not signaling something here without frustrating our partners and just how we're going to work with them. So I guess my question's maybe to our, to our city manager. As we're going to start the consultation process, if we're saying this is our piece of land, how do we get the county and the MD engaged in these conversations right off the start? Because I want to make sure, I see this as being our central facility, East Link's being our, our south side facility, and the Crosslink's going to be our north side facility. I see this being a really long, linear system now. We've got three major facilities potentially in our sports and rec utilization. I just want to make sure we're, we're having the county at the table on these conversations. I guess, can our city manager just give me more comfortability or ease on that?
Yeah, I'll add a little bit, and then if it's something missing, Mr. Nicolay can jump in. As early as, as recent as today, we've had conversation with our intermunicipal partners in regards to recreational needs. There was a significant amount of takeaways from that conversation in regards to evaluation of utilization in the Crosslink facility in particular, as well as our ICF does indicate that future recreation facilities, if added to either municipality, would be a conversation from both municipalities. So we have been having those conversations, and we'll continue to have those conversations. those conversations. We'll continue to have those conversations. There's another intermunicipal collaboration committee meeting next week with both parties at the table where we'll have continued conversation in regards to court space usage and needs, as well as soccer space usage and needs, as well as the utilization of the crosslink. And at this point, I think that it's fair to say that the conversations have started. The, our county partners are well versed in the details and our conversations to date. They're aware of what we're considering. They are at the table to have a collaborative conversation, and I know those conversations will continue.
Thanks for that, Mayor Clayton. I just, I'm more thrown out because we do have meeting in the room, and we constantly get rib punched that we don't have a good real working relationship with our partners in the region. And we've been talking with them a lot on this. And so I just want to make sure that our community is well aware of this isn't just a city of Grand Prairie decision. We definitely want to hear from the county and the MD on this as well.
Thanks for that point. Before I go to Councilor Thiessen to close, anyone else? Seeing none, Councilor Thiessen?
I don't know if a guy should close when he's batting a thousand around the council table, but I will take this opportunity to have my mic time. And yes, I agree 100%. We should be having that conversation with the county. We have a regional rec committee for all the right reasons. And hopefully, if we make this investment with a few friendly conversations, we may be able to cover all the sports and recreation needs for our region in the interim for now. So that's just hopeful. That's hopeful discussion. As far as this site goes, I really, really like the Avondale preferred site. I look at it as, we started, we're starting on something here. So I like the, the talk about maybe more housing, maybe more additions to it. Really, it screams to me a lot of what several members of administration and council were at, which is economic development and the conference here. I think there's lots of reasons why it super works. And I'm really, really excited about the fact that on Tuesday, we had a couple delegations that were equally, probably even more excited about the potential of those sites where they're looking at other community supports, corporate sponsors. And sometimes that goes a very, very long way. So I would encourage those members, if they're watching tonight, Mr. Shabat and Mr. Berg, keep doing what you're doing, because sometimes you go farther because you're not part of the city organization. We can make good things happen together. So that's really, really good. Finally, I think this is a step in the, I think this is a step in the right direction. And I think as far as talking about recreation facilities and prepping council and the community, I really want to thank the community for coming out because they really educated themselves about what was going on in their neighborhood. And if we have active engaged communities like that all around, everyone's going to have the neighborhood that they want, you know, because they'll be willing to take the time and effort to come out. Speaking of time and effort, I really want to thank our administration again for putting together a very detailed plan for us so that we had lots to mull over, and we still have lots of questions. But I think you gave us lots of answers without even having to answer one. So thank you very much for your team and all the hard work put into this. And I look forward to this site being developed here real soon. Thank you.
Thanks for your close, Councilor Thiessen. I will call the question. Councilor Bosch and Councilor Plott?
Councilor Plott in favor.
Councilor Bosch in favor.
Councilor Bosch and Plott in favor. That carries unanimously. Councilor Plott, before I go to you, I just had a question for administration. Early on, when Swan City Football Club came to our, to the city as well as the county for funding in regards to planning, they indicated that they wanted to be a financial partner in any future facilities. So has Swan City Football to date had any continued conversations in regards to their financial contribution to projects that we're considering?
Thank you through the mayor. So you are correct in that there was some funding allocated on behalf of the city, provided that the Swan City Football Association could match those, that funding. That as part of the potential Sportsplex expansion project, the Swan City Football Association did commit money to that potential project. We have not specifically asked related to this proposed project, but administration certainly would intend to do that. And administration would be optimistic that they would be, continue to be in support of that.
Perfect. And so I don't need a motion. I think it's great. As we continue to have conversation with our municipal partners, I think it's imperative for us to have conversations with the user groups of facilities as we look to expand, add, and operate facilities going forward, that our user groups be part of that conversation as well. Thanks. Councilor Plott?
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. I just wanted to make a subsequent motion now that we've selected a potential site. And that would be that administration bring back to our fall deliberations what the cost would be to complete the road out to 108 Street, as well as a secondary of what it would also cost to service the future commercial and multifamily sites. Reason I'm saying that now is I think if we're going to go ahead for 2024, and we're going to have potentially this building go up if this does all go ahead, it'd be nice to work concurrently on that as well to get that road and that stuff opened up. We're also, we have made a subsequent motion other time about looking for future land. And I think this is, I said it earlier, I think this is one of the best pieces of land we can look at for seniors and multi in our area, for families, sorry. And so I would like to see us try to get on that sooner or later. And I do think this opens up a very nice track along. So I hope you can support that.
All right. So that motion is in order. I see Council Blackmore had a question.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. My question, I guess, is for administration is what is the plan for Peace, Peace Whoppity Academy to move? Like, what's the timeline for that? And when will that land actually open up?
So I can tell you what I know, and administration jump in. At this point, conversations have been, there's no set date. There is a long-term plan, is what I've been told. And in estimations, I recall, and Mr. Glavine, maybe you recall, that the conversations were 10 to 15 years, to my knowledge.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Yeah, I believe it was in that timeframe.
Okay. All right. Council Bressi. Sorry, Council Blackmore, before I go to someone else, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's everything. Thanks.
Council Bressi?
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I like where this is going, but I don't know if I can support the motion as is, because for me, it's a, I definitely think council should consider, should we expand that road concurrently? But for me, more than cost is a consideration. I'm not sure if it needs to happen right, happen right now, because we do have significant in and out of traffic in that neighborhood when the high schools get in and out. And I think this facility will probably have, I don't know if the facility will have more traffic than we're already seeing at Peaks, and if it will line up with the Peaks we're seeing at schools. And so for me, I'd love more information and from our engineering department in terms of, do we actually, should we actually be punching this road through now? Or is it something that can wait in the future? And so for me, I definitely want to get costs on that road, because we should at least consider it, but just the cost. And it just coming to budget deliberations where we have to make 100 or so other decisions doesn't work for me.
So do you want to maybe add that, Mr. Nicolay?
Just, I'm sure it would be an acceptable friendly amendment. We would do a traffic impact study or planning study and cost analysis. Bring those back together, you can determine whether it should be done, whether it should be done now, and if so, what would it cost to do it?
And as well, I think Mr. Glavine had his hand up and maybe some subsequent information that might be valuable.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Two things. One is just the way the motion reads, and I think the intent that says 108 Street, but I believe it would be 116th Avenue is the intention that we want to connect to, punching straight to the north. And second, and this isn't going to impact the motion, but just the high-level cost estimates that were done for punching that road through with respect to the area redevelopment plan were between 3.5 and $5 million.
Okay. So based on that, Councilor Plott, did you want to keep your motion as is? And you want to see traffic impact studies and timing, et cetera? Or what are your thoughts?
I mean, obviously, my address was wrong, so I would want that updated. But I think, as Mr. Nicolay mentioned, I think that'll come back in the report, and council can make a decision. I'm not even saying we need to do this. I just think it's a topical thing to have this fall and yea or nay on whether we think it's important to do. I'm sure that when they come back, if they say we don't see a liability or need for this, and it's $3 million, we can debate it at that time. I just would rather give the flag now to administration to get the pre-work done, so that when we get to budget, it's an option for 2024.
So the motion's in order. Councilor O'Toole? The motion is in order, assuming the address is updated. Councilor O'Toole?
Yeah, basically, a few years ago, when we were discussing this, there was a neighbor that wanted 105th Street taken out to the 116th Avenue. And the concern there was the elevation. So we'd have to raise the road to come up with the highway. So that's where some of that cost would be substantial. If it was just straight, it would be quite a bit less. But hauling clay and gravel in was going to be an expense. That's all I had to say.
I just jump in with a comment. I think that the timing and the traffic impact that's going to be, as much as there was concern in Smith subdivision, I drive a child to school every day at the comp, and I can tell you that it's not the most mobile area of our city. So, you know, and sure, on weekends, the kids aren't going to school, but a lot of the kids that go to the comp drive. So there will be traffic impact by adding this facility. So I think that's a valid point and motion. Councilor Bressi?
Yeah, if somebody lives by and also drives this every day during rushes, don't get me wrong, I'd sure love to see that road. It just isn't, is it worth the price? I don't know. And I'd like more information to figure out if it's worth the price. Sorry, just, maybe I'm getting a bit pedantic, but wonder, just friendly amendment, if if Council Plott would be comfortable asking it to come to the appropriate standing committee instead of fall budget deliberations, just so we can have a bit more fulsome conversation about it?
Councilor Plott?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, so that motion updated council is in your package to read. Council direct administration to bring back the cost to complete the road to 116th Avenue, as well as a service for future sites to the appropriate standing committee. Good? All right. I'll call the question on that. And that carries unanimously. Any, I feel like Council Bressi told me you may have subsequent motion?
No, I think I heard from the city manager that I think the information that I'm hoping for will be at least look for, and just so administration knows, it's, I've seen some fabric clad buildings, and I think they're worth investigation, but I honestly don't know if they can do the span that's needed, or administration might get into it and realize, oh, no, that's going to be like two or three times the cost, in which case, not me. So I trust administration, if they do some high-level work and just come back and say, yeah, we look at it, and it's not feasible, I'll take your word for it. But if it looks like it might be feasible enough for council to consider, then I'd love more information on it.
All right. Seeing nothing further on this item, I'm going to move to item 14.2. And I will look to administration. I'm not sure who is introducing this, who may have comments. And if not, council, this is really, it is a piece of business, item of business that was discussed at standing committee. It's in, in regards to an expired downtown incentives program. Mr. Harrop, if you have anything you want to add, great. If not, I think council is aware of this conversation. So just be looking for business arising. And this is in regards to policy 316 and reallocating the remaining funds to the Economic Recovery Fund. And if we see no one, it won't get done. Okay, Councilor O'Toole, please go ahead. Oh, and now I see Council Blackmore. My apologies. Go ahead, Councilor O'Toole.
Yeah, I can, I'll make that motion. I move the council rescind policy 316 and reallocate the remaining funding to the Economic Recovery Fund.
All right. Thank you for that. And so just as mentioned, speaking to that motion, this is in regards to an Economic Recovery Fund that had expired, I'm sorry, and a development incentive program that had expired. So this will allow council an opportunity to potentially support other economic development initiatives. Seeing no comments or questions, I'll call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Moving on to the third item of unfinished business. This is regarding bylaw C-1260-165. And Mr. Johnson. Good evening. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. So administration presented the bylaw 1260/165 on April 3. And the bylaw received the first and second reading, but did not receive the third reading on that day. So this was due to two main concerns that was raised by Mayor Council Okono and Council Blackmore. Council Blackmore. Council Okono had addressed the concern that the definition for the dispatch, I apologize, please. Council Okono addressed in concern that the dispatch services definition did not specify whether it is meant to be a commercial business or a home-based business. And he wanted some clarification on that. And also, Council Blackmore has raised a concern about, not a concern per se, but a question that asked whether it speaks, whether this amendment speaks to the delegation that was heard like a year ago concerning designated driver services. So I will speak first on Council Blackmore's question. So this bylaw amendment is not related to the delegation that was raised. The legislation that was raised concerning the designated driver services was concerned about the bylaw 1394, which was the vehicle for hire by law. And the concern then was whether somebody can run that, run a business without having presence in the city of Grand Prairie. And that has been resolved with the enforcement services. That issue has been resolved, and the business owners are happy at the moment. So concerning Council Okono's concern, he wanted to know whether this dispatch services is meant to be a commercial business or a home-based business. So we have allowed these dispatch services in various commercials, districts in the land use by law. And but that does, that does not mean that it cannot be run as a home-based business. However, if it is run as a home-based business, it is a home-based business, not, it won't be regarded as a dispatch office, because home-based business is a use on its own, and it has its own criteria or regulations or requirements to meet. So if the business operator meets these requirements, he or she may be, may be permitted to run it from home. But generally speaking, if it is dispatch service, then it has to be run at a commercial location or anywhere that is allowed for in the district, in the land use bylaws. So these are kind of the issues that were not clear or were raised during the last hearing. And I hope I have kind of shed some light on that. And I'm open to questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Open it up to council for, so basically, to remind council, we are at the stage we, to give third reading to this. There was a delay on third reading, as it was not unanimous to have third reading. So I think the questions that were addressed have been answered. I see Council Blackmore had a question.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Clayton. Thank you that those issues were addressed, and I have no further concerns.
Great. Thank you for that. Councilor O'Connor appears to have no further concerns. So I will be looking for a motion. And I'm just going to check, because I don't think I recall legislative services, if it needs to be the mover of the initial motions, it can be anybody. Okay, somebody would like to make a motion to give third reading, that would be great. Councilor O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I'd like to propose that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-165, being an amendment to the land use by law.
All right. That motion is in order. Opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call the question on third reading.
Bressi in favor?
Council Bressi in favor. And that carries unanimously. Thank you for your time and your information.
We have one more, right?
No.
I thought it was to have first read and then. Thank you.
All right. Item number 15 in your package, public hearing item tonight. And I will look to Mr. Harrop for introduction. That's all right.
Sorry, just wrapping up the task there. What was the question, sorry?
Introduction on the public hearing tonight. I'm happy to just go ahead, but if you had any introduction, if not, I can go for it.
Oh, we have Mr. Johnson there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm going to call this public hearing to order, look to, for introduction for Mr. Johnson and Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Administration has initiated an amendment to the land use bylaw to incorporate lands in the rural service area into the city's land use by law. The rural service area is the land that was annexed from the county in 2016, in order to ensure that landlords would to ensure that landlords would retain the same development rights they had while in the county, administration created new districts and regulations that mirror that of the county land use bylaw. The rezoning is being done in a phased approach, with the first phase presented here tonight. This phase involves 30 properties in the northeast quadrant. The rezoning will create a slightly less complicated regulatory framework, preserve development rights, and facilitate future development in the city. The bylaw also includes some housekeeping amendments. It updates the legend in the map and simplifies the home business regulations and corrects an error regarding commercial vehicles. Significant landowner engagement has been undertaken. This has included a dedicated engagement website, notification letters specifically outlining the rezoning specific to each property, and notice of the public hearing mailed to each resident. The proposed amendments rezone properties in the city's northeast corner from the county's land use bylaw zoning districts to the equivalent city land use bylaw districts. The rezonings will not impact landowner development rights or property taxes. Administration recommends that council give three readings to bylaws 1260-154. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, Ms. Downing. Opportunity for questions for administration. Counselor Plott.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. So if I'm understanding, this is, it's a housekeeping thing, but I've had several landowners reach out and just say there was original bill of rights that they were kind of sold on when we annexed the land, and we're slowly kind of changing them and making more prescriptive. So one of the things that's come up to me several times is that, you know, they weren't required fire permits at one point in this area, well, pre-anexing. Now it's annexed, and that wasn't required, and now it's required. And so, can we just speak to how we've slowly morphed like that? I know we're housekeeping internally, but from the, the outside perspective, they were kind of told, you know, we're gonna leave your land as is, and now we're gonna slowly chip away and change it. So can we, the fire permit once come up several times to me, so can somebody speak to me on why that was needed change for, for farming communities? Because a lot of farmers tend to burn things, and now they have to get permits, and I'm heard they can't even get permits anymore. So those are, these little changes that are coming through, that are, we've got some frustration from some quarter section owner lands that I've had conversations with.
Ms. Downing. Thank you through the mayor. The fire permit has nothing to do with development regulations. I'm not sure what department would cover fire permits, but enforcement services, so perhaps that would be a question better related to enforcement services. I can speak to from development regulations. We've gone to great lengths to ensure that any development rights that they would have under the county are retained in the city.
Okay, and so maybe, maybe it's not a land use issue, so I appreciate the clarification and get back to those constituents, but they're frustrated that it's, this isn't necessarily a land use issue at this time. They're just frustrated that there's been changes in what they're allowed to do to their land, and they were, that wasn't originally what was sold to them when they were annexed land, I guess. So just, you know, some caution for admin on that.
I see knowing further in the queue with questions for administration. Thank you. I will now go to the presentation and submission portion of our public hearing, and I will ask if there's anyone here or online to speak in support of this public hearing. I will ask a second time if there's anyone here or online to speak in support of rural northeast service area rezoning C-1260-154. And I will ask a third time if there's anyone here or online to speak in support of this rezoning. I will now ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to this rezoning of the northeast rural service area C, and it's a rezoning C-1260-154. I will ask a second time if there's anyone here or online to speak in opposition of this rezoning, and a third time if there's anyone here or potentially online to speak in opposition of this rezoning. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and look to business arising. And now one of my colleagues is gonna jump in the queue. Counselor Thiessen.
Yeah, I did it. All right. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-154, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you for that motion, Counselor Thiessen. That motion is in order. No discussion or debate on first reading, so I will call the question. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clayton. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-154.
That motion is in order, an opportunity for discussion or debate. Seeing no one in the queue, I will call the question on second reading to bylaw C-1260-154. Please vote. And that carries unanimously. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that council have third reading at this meeting.
This is a motion to have third reading here tonight at this meeting. In order for us to have third reading here tonight, it must pass unanimously. I will call the question. Please vote. That carries unanimously. And Counselor Thiessen.
All right, to tidy up business, I'd move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-154, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Perfect. Thank you for that. That motion is in order. Seeing no one in the queue for discussion or debate, I will call the question. Please vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your presentation this evening. Moving on to item number 16, delegation business. There was no evening delegates, so I will move on to council member reports, and I am going to start with Counselor Thiessen.
Ooh, that could be, all right. This is great, actually, though, because normally you guys are used to me talking a lot, but I honestly only went to a couple conferences over the last, over the last couple weeks, and I missed you at the last council meeting. Reason I missed you was because I was at the Alberta Seniors and Community Housing of Alberta Conference, the Home for Housing Conference, where we talked about solutions to creating around the, the housing issues that sort of tap every single sector of our, of our society, especially throughout Alberta. There was great conversations had there, and a great opportunity to bond with my Grand Spear Foundation board members, which we had many administration and board members there as well. So definitely pushing the needle on housing, unfortunately, even though it's election time. There weren't very many ministers there, except on the old, the old video call-in. I think, you know, it's, it's election time, so you gotta be careful with what they promise sometimes. Finally, this last week, I went to the Economic Developers of Alberta Conference in Caninascas, and I had a glorious time there. Not only did we get to watch Counselor Bosch's downtown project, you know, win an award for the city of Grand Prairie for revitalization and refresher on the downtown businesses there. But we also had many, many engaging conversations. In fact, I would say the, the EDA, this is my first time in 10 years on council that I ever went to this event. I think it's only been around for eight years. But first time was a charm. I loved it. It was lots of great engaging conversations, and my favorite part about it is I just asked a question, like Counselor Bressi asks about 20 questions at every conference he goes to whenever he gets a chance. But this question ended up being sort of the talk of the town. It happened on energy, and I just asked the transmission distributors, like, hey, is there anything that you guys working with ACO and the power companies can do to help reduce transmission and distribution costs, especially the northern regions, by doing something akin to what villages in India might do with less regulations, which is create a bit of energy sovereignty through a municipal solar program, and maybe have energy sovereign neighborhoods. I thought it was an out of the box question, but I got approached many, many times afterwards from people within the industry and even in the distribution and transmission industry, going, you're not allowed to ask those questions, but good for you, because we gotta do something too. So it was really, really great. So I was really grateful to go, spend time with Counselor Bosch, Counselor Platt, and a bit with Counselor Blackmore. And outside of that, I had a couple meetings with the Mighty Peace Waterside Alliance, as my duties per the chair require. And I think I do have one, one apology I need to give to our admin assistants and to our communications and marketing team who was on site, ready to videotape Counselor Thiessen down in Musca CP Park with some Easter eggs, and I just happened to forget about it while I was in the middle of the big move. But a big thanks to Kevin O'Toole for reminding me that I missed it and holding me to account. And I'd just like to apologize if I drained anybody's time that day waiting for me. So thank you very much, everyone. It's been a glorious two weeks. I look forward to getting back to work here in the city over the next two before my next update.
Thanks for your presentation, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton, and I'd have to say, I can't believe that you didn't have anything to say. Okay. Anyway, attended virtually a link to the medical education piece. I was very thrilled with that, kept losing connection, but I really like where the direction of that's going. Attended a hearing for Public and Protection Services, went to the SEEK flag racing at City Hall, and they were so thankful, even though they realized they were last minute, they were so thankful. And so hopefully, we can organize that for them next year.
If they get the paperwork in on time, that's not a problem.
Whatever. Anyway, and then went to the Storm Celebrity Dinner, and Jack Michaels and Louis DeBrusque really brought their A-game and was very inspiring. So my last comment, go Oilers!
Counselor Berg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Clayton. It was a relatively late schedule with Easter break and, and half a council at different events. But again, I too sat next to Counselor O'Connor at the Storm Celebrity Dinner. I think I've been to almost all of them, and each one has a different dynamic. And so this was the broadcast crew of Jack Michaels and former Oilers tough guy Louis DeBrusque. I did get to ask one question, and it was about coaching, and which I think turned into about a 20-minute answer on leadership, which was actually quite enlightening and something that I hadn't really thought of. And some great points were brought up about that, that not only apply to hockey, but to any organization, which is, again, also a compliment to our leadership team here at the city. It's not all glamorous and fun stuff. I sat in with a couple of other councillors, O'Connor and Bressi, on a vicious dog appeal hearing. Those are quite challenging, but a necessary part of the job. And a medical education session engagement here at City Hall, which again, was quite informative as well. So that was my last couple weeks.
Thanks, that. Counselor Berg. Counselor Bosch.
Thank you, Mayor Clayton. Well, first of all, happy, happy post Easter to everyone that took up some of our engagement time with, with the public, spending time with our families, so that was great. The EDA conference, yes, that was good. Some of the, the sessions that I attended that were super interesting was what's happening with our small businesses in the country right now. And statistically, right now, they're saying 76% plan to exit within the next 10 years, and that's about 550,000 businesses. So we're looking at our baby boomers, you know, changing dynamics in their lives. 56 of those plan to exit within five years, and 17% accelerated their timeline. So they said 54% have a succession plan, but only 9% have it written down. So that is very interesting facts. Most, most ways of getting out of business, even farmers were 40%, of our farmers are looking to retire in the next few years as well. So what they had talked about was the kids aren't necessarily taking over the business, whether it's farming or, or any other business. They want, they want new things to do in their lives. So there was a lot of talk of selling it to your employees, whether it be one or several, outside buyers outside of the country, in fact, and merging with other businesses, or liquidating assets, and finally establishing a community cooperative. So the way that business is gonna look in the next few years will be interesting. It's not as easy to be a brand new business owner, you know, in this day and age of costs. Another interesting seminar that I went to talked a lot about the different age groups, so millennials, baby boomers, Gen Zs, and so forth, and just their work habits, their saving habits, what they're willing and will, and not willing to do anymore, particularly in work habits, shopping and purchasing interests, and the use of social media. So that really good conferences are really good sessions to go to in the conference that, you know, ultimately are that high level change in what our business is gonna look like in the future. So that's just a little bit of that. Raced home to get to the Storm Celebrity Dinner with the other two councillors, and then the next night, attended the Legion Awards and Honors Dinner. That was my first time doing that. That was really a nice evening to spend with Mr. O'Toole, or Counselor O'Toole. Bill Bassett, Senior, had 77 years of service to the Legion, so he was honored. And there was six Legion members over 50 years. So aside of that, awards for executive officers, committee members, ladies auxiliary, and the volunteer of the year. So really a nice event. Kudos to the Legion for, you know, pushing, pushing through. And I, I actually want everybody to, to know that you don't have to be a, a soldier or someone in the military to be a member. You don't even have to be related to someone who, who served, so you can be a member. So I urge everybody to, you know, get their membership and, and support the Legion. That's all I'll speak of for tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Bosch. I just got a text from my manager of my small business and say contractor to Counselor Bosch's statement, not all employees want to buy their business. So good to know. But yeah, Counselor O'Toole.
There you go. Thank you very much. On the fourth, I attended a Chair Leaders Planning Session. This year, we are going virtual. We're looking at past Chair Leaders in the community, and we're asking them to videotape a two to three minute section on what it was like to be in the chair for the day, and what they felt was the most important takeaway for them. And they'll be starting to come out here in another 10 days or so. I also attended that Easter Extravaganza, started at nine o'clock, and I gotta tell you, one of the most successful events city has done in that museum. It was a lineup at nine o'clock. Every 45 minutes, there was another 55 people go through, and it went right till five o'clock. It was a complete sellout. And, because I was sort of just standing around and just being a, a person to help people, I ended up taking buckets of eggs and replanting them after they got found. There was crafts there, there was painting, there was, oh, you name it. The kids were happy, and for about 45, 50 minutes, they were pretty excited. And so with that, I congratulate the museum and the city staff for doing such a great job. I also attended on the Monday morning, the onboarding of new employees, which is a program we've talked about a few times, Mayor Clayton, and as I was deputy mayor, we'd just talk a little bit about the city, how long we've been there, and ask them some questions. They asked us some questions, and I spent maybe half an hour there, and looks like we've got a new lifeguard, we've got another person at the East Link Center, we've got bus drivers, and so it's pretty exciting for those people to come onboard with the city. And, and that's a full, I think it's a full day, isn't it, or most of a full day? And so they got lots of questions answered from administration, and I want to thank Mr. Lemieux for being there as well. They all fit under his category in his department, so anyhow, that's the process, and we're gonna be following that for quite a while. I also attended the medical education engagement, and I also was here for the SEA Heritage Month Flag Raising, Presentation to the Legion 54. Yeah. Counselor Bosch pretty much said everything, but I was really impressed that, you know, I'm getting up there in age, and I knew most of the people there. And when I remember seeing them, I was pretty young at the time, but
You're still young.
Yeah, well, not, not in the morning. I feel kinda tired. And at night, I want to go to sleep, so. But it was great to, I actually visited with probably about 45 people that I used But it was great to, I actually visited with probably about 45 people that I used to spend time with way back in the day. And I just want to highlight one of, one item that I know. Bill Bessant, he had a twin brother. They went over to the fight the war back in the day together. Bill's brother didn't make it back. He made it all the way back to the airstrip and coming in, it was foggy and they crashed. And I've known this story for a long time. Bill went on to do 30 flights in a month in all over Europe and that's almost unheard of, like that's hero stuff. And he's pretty proud that he has accomplished, but you know, he would also like to have had his brother back. I also went to the Sikh temple yesterday and it was open house for the Vashiki Festival, which is this weekend. And they served us dinner and we visited with more people and it was a great event, great social and very exciting around the Sikh temple yesterday. They're, they're living their life. So that was a great event for me. And this weekend is the Vashiki Festival on Saturday night, I think it is, and the Art Gallery Gala. So those are my highlights and we won. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Clayton. I loved spring breaks. I got, I didn't go anywhere. It was a staycation-ish for me, but I got to get a lot of coffee meetings with residents to talk about various issues. Just met up with residents who have young kids and we just met up at playgrounds and got to have coffee at playgrounds and so really great to get to take my work outside because the weather was so great. Had a meeting of the Alberta Winter Games Board. I'm really enjoying that appointment and it's, I'm so excited to thank a couple thousand athletes and their support people to our community next year. The highlight for me though, was I had some memorable nights downtown. I've, I've heard that Grand Prairie at one time had a good downtown nightlife, but that was gone before I got here. And so this is the first time since I've moved here that there's a really good, fun nightlife down in Grand Prairie where you can walk between different establishments and have fun. And I had a, two very memorable nights in Latitude 55 and another one in 92 Drink Co., where I stayed quite a bit longer than I intended to. I had quite a few more drinks than I wanted to, but I didn't have any alcoholic drinks because both places are putting a lot of intention into making really good craft mocktails. And so it's really cool to see our retailers make sure that they're creating a welcoming nightlife downtown for everybody, regardless of what choices they, choices they make in their life. And so very proud of the investments that we've made in downtown and even more proud of the investments that private businesses made downtown. And then finally, last thing I'll say is I do also just want to publicly apologize to Counselor Bosch for completely mishearing her early, earlier in the meeting. So I did want to publicly say that too. I know I said it privately through text, but want to publicly say that too.
Thanks for that. Counselor Platt is your name, sorry. My apologies. Counselor Platt.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. My, my last couple of weeks are mostly filled with some family time and then our conference to EDA. Some, some takeaways from the economic development conference for me this year was, was interesting. I did a couple sessions around employee attraction retention and I took a picture of one slide that really hit home to me that said, smaller cities and suburbs are originally taking and competing better with larger city for quality of life and affordability. And there was another subsequent slide, which I would be happy to share with, with admin, but I think they might have captured it as well, but of the top 10 reasons that people might want to move to the city, move away, our city is very attractive and a lot of those areas were affordable, it's easy to get around, houses are cheaper, lots of work options. So this remote work thing, as much as I think it's a pain in the butt, actually could be a really huge advantage for the city of Grand Prairie and I think that's something that our, you know, our team I'm sure was taking notes there as well. Some other interesting notes that I took from the conference that actually stood out to me were just around the ag food services business. I know we've talked about vertical farming, but 130,000 employee shortage forecasted for the ag society, for agriculture. That's a lot of job shortages. So I know a lot of industries are talking about job shortages. I guess for me, I'm not a farmer, I'm a city kid, but I just really realize that industry is going to be very different looking moving forward. There was talks about vertical, vertical farming, but there was also talks about people getting their first fish out of an aquarium that was in a warehouse. So just how we're going to create food moving forward was interesting to me. Also was interesting hearing some comments saying about how we need to lobby the provinces better, that the cities actually need more affordable housing in small cities and mid-sized cities than larger cities. So it's quite the opposite of what I feel like the province tenderly funds. They like to give the money to the Avetons and the Cowagrees of the world. Their comments were quite the opposite of that, that's the one session I was at. Interested about looking at a mentorship program for the city of Grand Prairie and we've discussed it in the past, but to Counselor Bosch's point, there's a huge exodus of people getting out of business and not the same urgent for young entrepreneurs who want to get into business, which saddens me as an entrepreneur, but I do think that's something we're going to have to be more conscious of, of trying to match people together. And another one around farming that I was kind of interested in was that the city of Lethbridge apparently has 53 more Sundays now for farming than they did years ago. So they've been tracking how many Sundays they have in a, in a calendar year.
Days of sun, not days of the week.
Yeah.
Okay. I was like, wow, we got to...
Interestingly enough though, I'm curious about Grand Prairie because what they're saying down there is in essence, they're unable to get almost another crop in a year with that kind of change. So maybe global warming has some benefits as well. And lastly, Gen Z is 32% of the world's population, but 70% of the food purchase are influenced by this generation. So it's just something that really hit home to me that we have to pay a lot more attention to that, that generation as well. So good conference, lots of good breakout sessions, really appreciated a lot of the conversations of their elected officials on things that they're trying to do. Of course, with economic development, they're always trying to come up with some creative things. There was municipalities in the States that were paying $10,000 to move there. So, you know, there's money being thrown around all over the place and so sometimes there's an output for me, just because you're throwing money at things doesn't necessarily mean it's going to make, make it work either. Those cities haven't been able to actually retain, retain people like they thought they would, even though they've thrown a lot of money at them. So that was my report and it was a great conference. Thanks.
Thanks for that, Counselor Platt. I did have one item of business in council member reports and then I'll have a brief update on some of my works. I would, I would like to move that council rescind the appointment of Mr. Brian Glavin as Director of the Board of Directors of the Grand Prairie Airport Commission and you'll see the subsequent motion in your package. This is simply not that, no worries, Mr. Glavin's not going anywhere. He is just, his new bucket of business doesn't include the Grand Prairie Airport as one of his organizations that he does outreach with, so we'll make a shuffle internally. So I would like council support on that motion and then I'll make a subsequent motion. Call the question on that one.
Counselor Berg in favor?
Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Berg in favor?
Counselor O'Connor in favor?
And Counselor Blackmore text, she has left us, so that's perfect. Okay. So that's everybody that carries unanimous. And the second, that council appoint Mr. Jeff Harrop as a director, as a director on the Board of Directors at the Grand Prairie Airport Commission. So as indicated, there's a little bit of a shuffle and admin and Mr. Harrop has the Grand Prairie Airport in his, his list of organizations as affiliate organizations. So look for support on that motion as well, please. Call the question.
Counselor Berg in favor?
Thank you.
Counselor O'Connor in favor?
All right. And that carries unanimously. Just briefly, update on personally, I had an opportunity to get away with my family, which was very nice. So I wanted to thank Counselor O'Toole for increasing his roles and responsibilities as I was away and he's currently the deputy mayor. Also wanted to say thank you to administration. They relatively left me a little bit untouched, so that was good. It was a nice amount because I don't, I like to work every day, so I got to do a little bit of work every day while I was away, so thank you for that. And also just wanted to say that it was the first time I haven't been to the Economic Development Conference in a few years, but I'm glad to hear that some new attendees were there, that, that they learned lots. Sounds like it was a great opportunity. I can tell you, counsel, the weeks ahead are very busy, so I'm glad you got a break over Easter, had some time to spend with your family and friends and that you all had a little bit of a rest. So thank you. I'll call this meeting adjourned and we'll see you soon.